I hope everyone had a wonderful weekend. We'll start off with public comments. Clark, I believe you said we have two comments. Mr. Larry Pierce and then also we have Mr. John Tomasky. Just wanted to remind you all, the Board of Commissioners appreciate your contribution, your responses and comments to your government, your local government. And we'd just like to remind you, we have a new system that I'm trying out and it seems to be pretty effective. So when you hear the, you have three minutes to speak. When you hear the sound of the music, we ask that you wrap your sentence up. So when you come forth, give me your name and your address again for record. Mr. Pierce, please come forward.
Larry Pierce, 21st and Central Road, Douglasville, Georgia. You know, sometimes I never know what I'm gonna say. And I had it all planned out last week and I found out it was the wrong Monday. So Friday, my Board of Directors at Martin's, I have a Board of Directors at Martin's.
You do?
Tenants. They said, Larry, have you seen the paper? I said, no. They said, well, go get it. So I went over to Mrs. Liz's office and I said, I want 10 papers. And she said, that'd be $16. I mean, $20, $2 a page. I said, I got $5. She said, it's still $20. I said, I got $5 and that's all I can afford. So she gave me 10 papers. So, you know, I have difficulty in life with three minutes. But everybody in America can say what you want to say. You can believe what you want to believe. You can be what religion you want to believe. But those people downstairs are the Confederate daughters of the revolution. And the first thing I said when I came up the stairs, I said, my God, I didn't know there was any of you still living. So this here, I'm from Hawaii, okay? I was born in a college after a bomb. My mother was there with a girlfriend in a '37 Buick at Hickam Air Force Base. She was 18 years old. And she was there to pick up my dad, December 7th, 1941. The only thing that separates Hickam from Pearl Harbor is a fence. That's all it is. And at 7:30, a major 500-pound bomb went through the deck of the aerosol and went through the second deck and exploded in the magazine hold. And she sunk within tenons, killing 1,173 people, of which 1,003 are still in tune. Now, that's my serious side. I wasn't gonna talk about Ms. Godwin. Nope. I've got a little comical side, too. My comical side is this. At 3 o'clock in the morning, I got a phone call from someone in Alabama. And it was a-
Mr. Pierce.
-space alien. And that space alien said, he knows this man. So I'm here to tell you, this man has a following. And I'm warning you ahead of time, the people from Alabama are related to him and they are coming to get you.
Okay, thank you.
Humor goes a long ways. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. We appreciate your contribution to-
I've had those for 15 years and I knew it would come in handy one day.
We have Mr. John Tomasky, Mr. Tomasky, if you could come forward, please.
Morning to all, John Tomasky, 2949, Portrush, Winston. I am familiar with the new phrase, conventional wisdom, but of course, it's an oxymoron because if wisdom were conventional, the world would be a lot better place, including the country, including Douglas County. Now, again, one of the things that goes awry in budgetary processes is when Boards of Commissioners deprecate and subjugate constitutional officers by lumping them in with elected officials that don't have any mandated constitutional duties and responsibilities. And it has been made clear from early in 2017, when in March, the Sentinel began its articles about the coroner, that there were only four constitutional officers. Yet, the budgetary process that year described all elected officials, other than the five on the commission, as being constitutional officers. The constitutional officers have mandated responsibilities the others don't have. They ought not be put on that plane because they have higher responsibility and obligations. And as I mentioned earlier, there's a large body of case law where various constitutional officers have sued their commissions to get adequate resources and the Georgia Supreme Court generally uphold them under the doctrine of inherent right. And Boards of Commissioners do this for political reasons, reasons of empire building, cutting people's budgets, in order to use that money to promote their own pet projects and personal agendas. So as we go through this budgetary process, let us properly identify constitutional officers and let us not abuse the power of the purse. The court has said it is just fiduciary responsibility that gives the Board that right, not to use it as a political weapon. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Tomasky. We'll take this matter under advisement. Next, we have, we have three presentations this morning. And we have the honor of having Becky Kurtz here this morning from ARC, Atlanta Regional Commission, who I asked to come down and serve on the Aging and Independence Board with her and represent Douglas County. And we wanted to just ask her to impart all the great things that are available to our seniors here in Douglas County. And it's very important to me, and I asked her if she could just share this information with our Board of Commissioners this morning. So welcome, Ms. Kurtz, and we look forward to your great presentation.
Thank you. Thank you for the invitation. And like you said, we appreciate your participation, not only representing Douglas County on the ARC Board, but also especially on our Aging and Independence Services Committee. We really appreciate your active participation and guidance. I'd like to start off with a very short video that gives you a picture of what we're doing to try to-
Whoops.
What we're doing to try to outreach to your constituents and constituents within the 10-county ARC area about the kind of services we have. And then I'll talk a little bit after that. Now, be quiet.
Now, there's life changes and surprise obstacles. In the Atlanta region, some of us need a little more help with today and support for tomorrow. At ARC, we are designing an age and disability-friendly region for all residents. Jim and Cheryl and Marietta want to make sure their son has access to the support he needs. Sheila's daughter has moved away to Chattanooga and wants to be sure her mom's is active. We all deserve to live our best lives, so we are making our homes, health, and communities priorities. Meet Empowerline, your personal front desk. We're here to help. Call us or log on 24/7. It's well-designed wellbeing. Abe from Atlanta knows that his diagnosis doesn't mean the music has to stop. Medj in Lawrenceville doesn't have to worry about how long he can stay in his home. Your needs come first, so we can live our best lives and create a better future for our entire nation. How can Empowerline help you?
I'm sure you heard that, "High-tech at ARC." So I wanted to take you through a few different slides about what we're doing for our public outreach. One of the things we've heard for a long time is the challenge that people have getting the information they need about aging services and services for people with disabilities. So I'm gonna take you through a few slides about what we're doing about that. And this is our new branding that we've just been pushing out this summer. So it's, we're still getting used to this tagline and this image, but it's really a focus on helping people know how to reach us for information. And then I'll talk a little bit about how that, how we directly partner with Douglas County as well. So just a few slides about this. So we believe, and I'm sure you all share this belief, that we thrive when we make our homes, our health, and our communities priorities. And we call ourselves the front desk. We're the place to come to get counseling about what options are available. That's whether those options are private pay, you just need information about how to get, say, for example, someone to come into your home to assist your mother with some housekeeping, or to help with personal support, or respite, a break for a caregiver. We can help you connect whether you're private pay or whether you might qualify for publicly-funded benefits. And we have 24/7 counselors available. In addition to the phone, you can also go online and do an online chat with a counselor. And then we partner with a trusted network of community services and healthcare providers. We have a long list of providers in our region that are able to help with a variety of needs. And one of the really important things we do is partner with each of the counties in our region, including Douglas County. So thank you to Richard Hagan and his staff for the amazing work they do here in Douglas in our partnership with them. And we provide federal and state grants to that department to provide the services that are publicly funded here in Douglas County. We also provide the gateway, the front desk, for people who are Medicaid-eligible and receive Medicaid-funded services in their homes through a program called Community Care Services Program you may have heard of. One of the things we're doing in our website and all our publications, and we've got some social media accounts as well as Empowerline.org, is we're trying to help people understand the services, not through a list of figure-out-our vocabulary, right? What is respite? What is, what do these words mean? Instead of all that, instead of a list of services, which is what our old Age Wise Connection used to have on it, we've decided to use it through stories, to describe through stories what, what we might be able to help with. So for example, we tell the story of Maria. Maria has a lot of fond memories of living in her home and she doesn't really want to leave, but she knows she's getting older and having some limited ability to get around her house. She wonders how much longer she'll be able to stay here. For a person like Maria, we can then connect her to the services that would help her stay in her home as long as possible. And so we might link her, depending on her needs, to personal care and like, housekeeping. Or maybe she needs access to financial assistance to pay her utility bills. Or maybe she needs some home-delivered meals. We can wrap those services around her and help her, if she's a Douglas County resident, we can help her understand what's available in Douglas County. Or Henry has, is a child with, an adult child with developmental disabilities and his older father, James, is concerned that he won't be able to continue to support Henry as he, James, gets older. So we help James understand what's available for him as the father, as also what's available for Henry, his son with developmental disabilities. So we might help him understand about care coordination and the services that are available for both caregivers and for adults with developmental disabilities. Or how to navigate the healthcare system, or what he's eligible for in case that may have changed. This is Chuck, and Chuck and his friends have played every Friday for the past 25 years, but he's got a chronic diagnosis and he's concerned about how his healthcare might impact his ability to stay engaged in the community. And so we are able to help him figure out where are the health education classes that can help him with his chronic disease, or how he can get involved in his community through volunteer opportunities, and stay engaged and active as he, as he ages. And this is for a caregiver who lives in Chattanooga. I won't take you through all the stories, but I welcome you to look at Empowerline.org and go through the stories and see if you know people in your community who fit these descriptions and how we can help link them to the services in Douglas County that will assist them. So we're really just kind of the front door, the front desk, and then we help connect people to a variety of services. We have been able, this year, we're really pleased to say that we were able to get some additional federal funds through the Older Americans Act. Any of you who have connections to your members of Congress, thank them, because every member of our delegation in the Atlanta region supported increased funding for Older Americans Act services. And that meant an increase for what you all are able to provide in terms of home-delivered meals, congregate meals at your senior centers, those kinds of services. We also provide a grant through Federal Transit Administration to provide human services, transportation in Douglas County. So we provide grants as well as the front door to get to those services and explain to your constituents how they can get the services they need, whether they pay out of their pocket or whether they pay publicly. Our hope is to maximize the private pay and minimize the public option, so we save that for those most in need. So I'll turn it over. I don't know if there's a moment for questions. Each of you will have a bag full of materials to hand out to your constituents, to take to town hall meetings, wherever you might find that information useful. And on the back table, there's a pile of additional postcards for anybody in the audience and magnets that say how to reach us. So I'll turn it over to you. I don't know if you think there's time for questions or whatever you'd like.
Board of Commissioners, so you have any questions for which ones?
Did not know we had the service.
That is, I'm glad, I'm glad to offer the opportunity to, to talk about it today and we're excited about the opportunity. It gives anybody over age 60 and any adult of any age with a disability, we can help link to services.
Okay, any other questions from the Board of Commissioners?
Thank you, I'm Chair. So you mentioned that there was transportation, would that, talk about that a little again? You said health services, you would help?
So we, we have a few different transportation service programs and your Douglas County folks can tell you a little more detail about how it works in Douglas County, I'm sure. But we provide some grant funding through the Federal Transit Administration. It's a program called 5310. And it's a competitive process that we aren't able to fund everyone who applies in the 10-county area, but we are able to give funds to Douglas County for human services, transportation. And Douglas County can decide how they want to structure that in their proposal to us. We have had some services in our region for helping people get to their medical appointments. Unfortunately, those have not been available to Douglas County yet. It's a grant that was funded through a partnership with MARTA and with some City of Atlanta hospitals. But, but through the Human Services Transportation Grant, we've been able to help the folks in Douglas specifically.
Excuse me, to answer that, to kind of piggyback off of what-
Thank you.
Could you go up to the mic? This is-
No good deed goes unpunished. You get to come up.
Good morning, I'm Davina Walker from Douglas County, Rod Chair. And to help her out with this information, we have the Transportation Senior Voucher Program, which provides transportation to senior citizens and to disabled adults. They can go to the doctor and it's human-quality services. So they can go to the doctor, they can go to the mall, they can go to a family reunion, as long as they can provide documentation of their income. And they get so many vouchers, they purchase so many vouchers for so much money. That has been a very good program for Douglas County. We've been in service since, I believe, 2008. It's been five years, so whatever five from, from 18 is. So 2013. But it has been a program, I've been able to physically see the relief and the, and the help and the gratitude of citizens who are using this program. So I just wanted to help out with that question. Thank you.
No, no, thank you very much and I'm gonna continue on. So to that point, do we know the, the size of Douglas County's aging population? I mean, that's basic facts.
I can totally get that for you, I just I'm not off the top of my head. I know our region has 700,000 individuals over age 60, but I'd be happy to get you the specific breakdown for Douglas, as well as how it's projected to grow over the next few decades. We'll be happy to provide that to you. One of the things that we're very focused on, in addition to the provision of service and the grants piece that we do through our county partners and other nonprofits, is that we have a planning function for our area to look at the needs of the future, as well as the present. And one of the things that we've discovered over and over and over again is transportation is always identified as the biggest need. So we have important services here in Douglas County that we fund, but we know the need is bigger than the funds are available. So we always have more need than we're able to meet, especially around transportation services.
And I, and I appreciate that, and I always know that, you know, and we appreciate. This is the first time that you guys have been out here, I believe, formally like this, at least during my term.
Thanks to your chairwoman, yes.
So to that point, and so it always starts with awareness. But at the same point, the Board of Commissioners here are to sometimes, you know, either extend or prohibit certain things based on what we believe. And I think that, that's the needs of our citizens. We know that Douglas County is aging.
Yes.
Right? And at the same point, it's transitioning. You've got a lot of new, but you've got, it's natural and we know this. And the reason I asked about the facts was, okay, how fast is it growing? All right? And recognizing that there's only so much money that you can provide from the state, there's a local contribution that may need to be done. So, okay, you gotta fill in the gaps. So my question was more not to put you on the spot, but it's like, okay, I got it. I, I get it. But in, in order to move a little bit further along, we, we need a little bit more intelligence. Sometimes here I ask if they can provide us more real-time data on Douglas County-specific, not the region, but I'd like to know how we could help.
That's a very friendly question. I like that question. We'll, we'll be happy to provide that data and also to look to the future. As a region, we are looking in 12 years, 2030, we're looking as a region that on average, our population will be, 1 in 4 of us will be over age 60. And some of our counties are aging more quickly than others. So I will definitely follow up and send you all the statistics, not only on how many individuals are older right now, but also looking at 2030, 2040, 2050, what we're looking at in terms of trends, growth in this area. Our region is one of the fastest-growing older adult populations in the country. So it's a really timely and important question you asked.
Yeah. When we talk about long-term capital plan, the comment was made earlier about our budgeting, we need to anticipate.
Yes.
Right? And again, everybody knows that the baby boomers are coming of age, right? And so we know there's going to be a gap. And so we have, in Douglas County, we're trying to take some real proactive stance, okay, what can we do to make provisions for the future? So, but we need data. So that was my only point. We, we, good story, but we gotta take some really hard actions because we know it's $10 worth of need and we only got $1, but to the extent we can help add to it, it was helpful. I yield my chair. Thank you.
Commissioner Geider?
Yes, ma'am. Is that how you spell it?
Kurtz. Kurtz, let the car come.
Okay. Here in Douglas County, I think we accommodate 120 people with the voucher system, but we could, and we still have a waiting list of about 80 to 100 people that do not have any kind of other transportation. So we could buy more vouchers, right?
Absolutely.
Do you know about how much it is per-
Do you know what your unit cost is?
It's Davina.
I, I don't know, off the top of my head. We can get that for you. We can get the unit cost.
Yeah, that can be made available to you, we just don't have that information right now.
Because once someone is on the list, the voucher list, they're on there until either they move or they pass away. So we're, we're needing more.
Absolutely.
Especially as our population, our elderly population grows. So I would like to know how much it would cost for the county to actually buy additional vouchers.
We, we can definitely get that unit cost for you. And I really appreciate these questions because there's great variability from county to county in terms of where the level of investment and the ability of the county to invest. But there are some counties where our grants are 85% of the funding for aging services. There are other counties where we're only 10% and the county has put in that much additional. So you all are on that spectrum somewhere, but, but every county has to take a look at their population. So where's the unmet need and what are our opportunities to participate? So those are very friendly questions. We welcome whatever partnerships we can develop together to meet the needs of your constituents, who are also our constituents.
Thank you.
Can I just have one last question for you, Becky, and it may be for Director Hagan as well. Can you talk about discount in terms of pharmaceuticals for our citizens here over 60?
So I know that, I don't know if you have anything to add to this. I know that anybody who calls Empowerline.org, our counselors have a list of all the discount programs that are available and can take people through what they might qualify for. So that would be the best option, is to go to one of those counselors who's got a, a really good database of all the possibilities. I'm gonna just see if you have anything you want to add to that.
Well, it will be-
Yeah. For the audience.
That's fine.
Thank you, Director Hagan.
Sure. It would be the same for Douglas County. We would treat it the same way if that referral or that inquiry were to go to ARC. If it comes directly to us, it's handled in the same way because we sort of share a database of providers and programs and discounts and that sort of thing. So it would be handled in the same way.
Sometimes we call this no wrong door. You, you go to this department, you go to this department, we're gonna use the same database of information and share it so that you don't have to make multiple calls. We're trying to help people get the information they need, no matter where they call. So it's not a wrong door.
Okay. Commissioner Geider?
Just one question. Do y'all partner with faith-based organizations like the Pantry, the Care Place, New Mountaintop Church out there? They have a pantry too, so.
Partner from the standpoint of the truth.
Are they on your list?
Yes, yes, yes. We, we work hand-in-hand with all of those organizations, some more than others, and have recruited volunteers extensively through, especially New Mountaintop over the years and a lot of faith-based organizations and churches in the community.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I think, thank you all so much. And thank you so much, Becky, and thank you, Director Hagan, for parting this valuable information to us this morning.
Appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have an update from our Tax Commissioner. I approached him and also our Tax Commissioner and also our Deputy Chief of the Tax Commission. Jennifer Leirch is here this morning as well to present. And I approached the Tax Commissioner about, oh, two months ago and said, is it, I think it's time for an update. And I, they said, good things come to those who wait. And I understand they have some very good information for us this morning. So thank you so much, Becky, for coming in.
Good morning, I'm Jennifer Leirch, I'm the Chief Deputy Tax Commissioner. We also have our Tax Commissioner, Mr. Gregory Baker, he's right out here. He's making sure there's enough seats out here. So I'm just gonna kind of quickly run through this for everyone. We've had a busy year for our office this year as we moved. So we had a lot of packing and cleaning, moving, adjusting to a whole new system of how we have our customers in the office. So even with all that going on, we're still keeping up and we're actually doing more than we did last year this time. And you can definitely tell the economy is changing. You can see a lot more cars being bought, a lot more titles being done, a lot more TAT, just Title-I征税 tax being taken in. So so far this year, and this is just for the tag office, we've had 240, over $240,000 in just titles that have been done. We've had tagging, tagging transfers of the tags over $2 million in, in those fees that have been collected on that. We've had tagging tax penalties, those involve late payments, insurance laps, all those, or those are actually separate. But that's $126,000. Just auto tax, if you're on the old system, where you pay the ad form tax, we've already collected 1.5 million of those in, in revenue. TAT, which is the Title-I征税 tax, we've collected, this is our big one, over 16 million. It's almost- 16 million, it's almost 17 million now at this point, in Title-Ibblorm Tax that we've collected on new purchases with new vehicles. We've had T A B T penalties, when they either pay late or there's been an issue of over $111,000. The interest is at $7,000. Insurance fees, insurance lapse fees, if your insurance does lapse and the insurance company does not forward it over, you do pay a fee. And if you let it go even further, it gets even higher than that. And we've collected so far $147,000 in those fees. Alternative fuel vehicles, we've only got those at $9,000, almost $10. The highway impact fee is at $78,000. So for total, for just our tag office that we've collected, it's $21,66,494.17. So we've collected a majority so far this year in our tag office. And this is just kind of going to give you some numbers of how much that we do in our office. So far this year, we've already done 144,000 transactions. And that can be, you know, putting a hold on an account, putting notes in the account, anything that we did in our gratis or our tax system, we, and we've done a transaction, we've had 144 transactions that we've done. So that's, that's a pretty good portion. We've had out-of-state titles, we've done 2,281 of those. A title transfer, we've done 6,109. We've issued a tag or a decal, we've done 13,011 of those in the office, or by mail. Renewal, or renew your registration, we've done 82,521 transactions so far this year. So we've, we've definitely kept up, that's an average of 16,960 so far this year per month in transactions that we're doing in our office. And that's just our tag office side. So we're definitely keeping up, and it's actually more than it was last year, it's about 130 more than what we did last year per month already this year. So next, we have our tax office. We have had, I believe it was, four tax sales so far this year. We started out with anywhere between 250 to 300 properties in each one of those sales. We got it down to where we only sold a total of 111 properties, and we only had 30 that were no bids. So most of those other ones were all collected on, and that was all we ended up having to bring to the table, which is great. We've been able to get a lot of the older years collected, as you can see, so far, we've collected all the way back to 2009 tax. This past tax sale, we put some properties in that we've tried to sell multiple years in a row, and we can't get them sold. And we've put them in a tax sale this past month, and almost all of them sold or got paid, and so we got those off the books, which is great. And we had about 45 of those properties that we've been trying to sell, and we just can't get them sold. So that's something that we've definitely accomplished this past month, and we are excited about that, to get those off the books and to move forward. So so far this year, we have, don't have any 18, as you can see, because we haven't started 18, we're actually just mailed out the tax bills. This past Saturday, we mailed out over 55,000 tax bills. So, be on the lookout for your tax bill, it is coming. There will be a little flyer inserted there just to let everyone know that we have moved, but mailing address is still the same. So please do not mail the mail to the new building, it can stay at the same P O box or the 8700 address, it does not have to change. You can still overnight items to the 8700, and we will still get it. So it does not change or affect any of that. But, only way it affects you is if you're coming in person to the office. Don't come here, come to the 6200 Fairburn Road address. Okay? So, our total between both offices for this year, 26,758,383.86 in tax revenue that we've collected, and that's for all entities, and that's over the whole broad spectrum, that's interest, penalties, everything. So, we've done a lot this year. So, I don't know if Mr. Baker, you got anything?
Unless they got a question?
Okay. Board commissioners, anyone have a question or comment? Vice Chairman Robinson?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. We, so, what I heard you say in your opening comments is that you're seeing a lot more tax coming in, which is an indicator that the citizens are doing better. I heard you talk about going back to '08. It has been a decade, if you've been, if anybody's been around, we've come a long way.
Yes.
And, I mean, an awful long way, and the citizens are, again, improving. And I'm always sensitive about the narrative about doing well. As long as the citizens are doing well, making sure our, our conversation as a government does not outstrip our citizens and where they are, and that it's not disconnected, especially when we get in conversations regarding the spend, so we'll come back to that later. But, that, that being said, can you talk to about this T A B T, and I'm sure Madam Geiger would help weigh in on this? Is that changing over time? Do we see an adjustment coming? Where do we stand with all that?
I believe that everything is pretty much staying, I think it's at 7%, that is still, is the percentage that the Title-Ibblorm Tax rate is. It's not changing, I believe it's going to be staying 7% for, I think till 2025 is what the, I believe the agreement is.
Was it 2025?
It may be a little bit sooner before that, but you can definitely tell, and that's on the value of the car. So, and that, that just shows you that you can tell the values of the cars are either going up, or they're going, they're buying newer cars, or buying cars that are high in, in value. So, and they do have the right to appeal that as well, so.
All right. And just in general, my, my second question has to do more with operations, to your comment, if anybody's been downstairs to, if nothing to watch citizens come up there, and I, I know where they're going, because they look and they read on the door, they're like, oh, I guess I got to go somewhere else. But, but they didn't seem, I mean, consistently, no one seems to be upset, it's like, oh, it's up the street. How has that experience been so far in your new building? I'd like to hear for the record, and the tax commissioner can weigh in, how's it going so far?
It's been excellent. I am very proud of our employees and how hard that they worked to pick up how this new queuing system works. The first day we ran through, we had over 1,000 people the first day we opened up at that location come in. And there was a long wait, because we had, we were closed the day before, and we had a half-day on that Friday, so we had the weekend and all there. But we did over 1,000 people in that one day. Just for the month of July, I pulled statistics, we were an average from 1 minute 30 seconds to a little over 5 minutes on each customer, on average, that we were helping coming in. We had 744 people on, per day on average, come in for, for that whole month. So, it was a lot that was coming in in the month of July, and it just, it's going to vary for us each, each month because of birthdays, so it's not going to always stay that, that amount, but we're seeing anywhere from 400 to 800.
So, more throughput, you can get people in and get them out, it's a better layout for you?
Yes.
I mean, beyond the typical punch lists to come with any new building, overall, is what you really need to do, be able to provide better services for the citizens, is that accurate?
Yes. We do have a few actual vacant positions, or not positions, but we have vacant spots that we can grow, and have, we have about three on the tag side, that we can grow and, and make those positions and, and have those offer eventually coming up. So we do have space to grow. We have had some issues with our printers, it's not R I T group at all, it is actually the state. When we print through our gratis system, it actually goes through the state firewall, and then comes back to our printers and prints here. And the states had an issue with their firewall, and we've had it almost weekly where our printers just stopped working, and there's nothing we could do. And, but the state was able to get those back up fairly quickly. But of course, we were able to direct people, we had our tag renewal kiosk, it's right there in the lobby, we were able to move it, so we directed people there. We also directed them to Kroger, so they were able to still renew if that's what they were in to do.
All right. My last question is that, is parking sufficient there? I know we've got more ample space here in the courthouse per se, but how, for court, but how is it coming for you? Is it sufficient?
Yes, it's, it's great. It's perfect.
Okay. I yield, I yield, Madam Chair.
It's good right now. But remember, bills are due now. People are starting coming in now. That parking lot's going to fill up very fast.
Yeah. The 60-day due date, I have a feeling this year, we'll see more people coming in, just because they want to see the new location, and we want to definitely show it off. We're very proud of it, we worked very hard on it, and we do appreciate it, and we really, really appreciate it. So we definitely think we'll see more this year, maybe than the next year thereafter, but we'll be able to still get them in and out.
Madam Chair, just to clarify, so, to that point, how many parking spaces are there? And if you do get capacity, we don't have like the senior center across the street and so forth, but the courthouse, they had additional capacity. How will you handle that, or will citizens just ride around until there's a parking? Maybe the county administrator, can you speak to how many spaces there are? What's the, what is our backup?
I don't remember if they ever have any. Jennifer's saying that it's...
Okay. There's something to just be mindful of. I mean, I know we've got that big fleet area back in the back, but I think that's what, secure, unauthorized personnel?
Yes, it is.
So, it's just, okay. You guys work that out.
We'll probably have to work that whenever that comes, because that will be something we have not had to deal with as far as being in our own location. But we do have security there, which is, we're very thankful that Sheriff Pounds gave us that, and we do have that there, that we could also let them know during this timeframe, we're going to need extra assistance, and then they can help direct in the parking lot.
Yes.
Commissioner Geiger?
Jennifer, what percentage do tag renewals do you do by mail? Is it still around 30, 33%?
Yes, yes. It's still a lock on that.
Will not grow because of the few dollars extra, I guess, the charge and everything?
Yes.
But we could look at adjusting that charge, if it would encourage more people to do it. But the second kiosk, there was going to be a kiosk over at Kroger on Highway 5, is that up yet?
No, it's, it's in the works, but it, it's not up yet. Hopefully it'll be up by the end of November or December.
Okay.
So, we're working on it.
And, and the drop box, you, you have a drop box out here, you're going to have a drop box there where people don't actually have to go in to pay their taxes, they got a check or whatever.
We're actually looking at that right now. We're looking at two different options, either a drive-up option, where they can drive up, drop it in, just like they do have here. I know the one that we have here, it's starting to rust, we're having trouble opening the door every day, so we definitely are going to have to get something in place as soon as possible. Or, we can do an option where we have something in the door, where they can just drop it in through the door. But that would require them to get out of the car. So, I think the option that we're probably going to be going with is the drive-up, because there is a perfect location that we can put that in, that they could literally just drive right up, put it in, make a circle, and come right out.
Okay. All right. I yield.
Thank you. I just have one closing comment. Thank you all, first of all, for bringing this, bringing information to us. I, I've seen the total number that we have, what is the impact, and what is, what is this number compared to last year? We just, you know, to tell us how well we're doing, and what, I heard that we're doing good, but...
Yes.
In comparison to who and what?
I actually pulled that information, just for the tax office side, this just kind of helps for me, for purposes as far as new homeowners, you can see the difference between homesteads. Last year, we had about 3,119 total for the year of '18 in homestead applications that were filed. This year, we're only at, let's see, yeah, it looks like 2,085. So, it's not fully there yet, but we still have three, four months left in the year. So, we're definitely going to see that go up. And then as far as the titles and transactions, of course, those are less right now from the whole year to this year. Let me see, I actually have that right here. Total in transactions we had for '17 were over 200,000. We had 201,982 transactions. Out of those, the, let's see, tax collection standalone, we only had 1,635 total transactions for that, whereas this year, let's see, it looks like we're at 1,905. So, we've still got a little bit to go, and as many transactions as they're doing, it'll definitely start picking up.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Mitchell?
Just one quick question. The position that, that you hired Greg, that you were commercial side, how is that coming along? Any, any updates on that with that personnel, you know, that, that kind of got you ahead of the curve of, of those commercial businesses that are trying to sidestep?
That's coming along great. We're catching the companies that are going out of business.
Right.
Before they go out of business, we're collecting that tax revenue before they leave Douglas County, so we don't have to chase them down. We're actually, Mr. Barney was doing a great job, you noticed, I think the last one, I think I just mentioned it, he locked out the popcorn company next to Shane.
Popcorn Dico.
They hadn't paid their taxes in three years. He locked them out on, I think it was Thursday. Friday, they were in and paid all three years of taxes. So we're going through and, we're riding around, and we, we look at different businesses, and, and we find out who owes us taxes, and we're, we're giving them time to come in. These are people who he goes out, he talks to, they promise to come in, they never come in. And he gives them ample time. And then what we'll do is, once we go out and lock them up, they seem to find the money. So we're doing a great job on that end. Of course, we could use additional, but, again, we, we're going to survive with what we got, but I think we're missing dollars out there, but we'll do the best we can for it.
And that was going to be my next question, I mean, we're doing good with that, how can we do even better if we, I'm assuming we have the additional person? I'm assuming now, I'm not making this up for you, but if, if that makes...
Well, I did, I did my, my calculation, and I always do things on dollars, dollars and cents. I never want to add a person if they're not going to bring value to the count.
Understood.
So if they're going to make us an additional $2 million to bring revenue in, and it's got to be on a consistent basis, then I don't want to come to you guys and say, hey, I need this person that's going to bring this much. But I still have some more evaluations to do. And remember when I came to you and asked for two people, I think it's been two years now, I still have some more evaluation to do before I come back to you. I think I did some stuff in my budget, but it hasn't been as much as I, as I asked for before, because I think I can get by with a little less in training somebody. That's always my goal. So, I still need to do that evaluation before I ask for another person, and I, and I believe, like I say, I can probably get by training somebody and getting a little less dollars, but I got to make sure all those dollars that come in, that will make sense.
Okay, okay. I yield.
And one other thing, on the parking, it is going to be hard when they come in for their tax dollars, and they will be probably driving around, and they probably will do be some complaints, because it's only 90 spaces there. And you got to remember, on the tax side, some days there are 60 to 70 people there. So now you throw in the homeowners coming in to pay their taxes, somebody's going to drive around, and we're, and we're going to probably get some complaints, but we understand that that's going to be two to three months out of every year. And there's nothing we can do about it at this time, and we'll just have to live with it and work around it. And like I said, we do have security out there, we may set one of our employees out there, or you may see me standing out there to help direct traffic, get them in and out and the whole thing, but it's going to be that way for at least three months every year.
Okay. Thank you so much, Jennifer. Commissioner Baker?
Next, we have a SLOSS update by Mr. Terry Gable from Moale and Apple Billy.
Good morning, Madam Chair, and...
Good morning.
... board commissioners. My name's Terry Gable, I'm in Moale and Apple Billy, and I'll be giving a SLOSS update for September. This first slide is just a pie chart showing the, the three program elements. We're still coming right around $10 million. As this program grows, if you obviously see that number go up, but we've been, we've been just a little below $10 million for building up with approved invoices. And that includes, keep in mind, that includes both year one and two. For fire EMS, we're still around at $4 million for year one and two. Transportation, at $4 million. And then with parks and wrecks, the program that probably got more, most of the design in, and we're still in the design, design stages, and you're going to see a lot, you're gonna see that jump pretty quick with getting some of the concession buildings under construction, which is on the board, Board's agenda this month for approval. So, but we're still a little bit under four hundred thousand dollars for parks and recs, with a lot going on. And then finally, with program management, again, year-to-date, uh, year one and two, we're just a little over one million. So, in, in talking about revenues, um, the economy seems to be on, be robust, and we even had a little slight tip up from, uh, from June. It just right at two point two million. Comparing, this is just another graphic of it showing a little bit of a jump. Hopefully that'll stay there, the economy will continue to grow, and we'll see those go up. If you get a little closer to the holidays, that we'll get, obviously get the, the benefit from shopping, so. That's a good sign. Uh, this slide's showing, uh, again, total revenues for SLOSS year one and two. The, the revenue is just a little over thirty-two million dollars. And what was projected, we compared that to what was projected, uh, which we got, uh, this basically economic, uh, model, it's showing just the, uh, well, one percent growth each year, which is, that comes to about thirty-two million dollars. So, we were right on, right on projections from what the, uh, what was first established at the beginning of the program. Just a slight difference, we're under about fourteen thousand dollars for the total of both years. And then the raw numbers for, um, for July was two point two-four million. Uh, if you compare those first four months of, of the second year SLOSS, uh, the projection was a little over eight million, and then we've, we've collected eight point four-six million, which you've got about a four hundred thousand dollar difference there. If you, if you average that out per month, we've, we've seen since April, we've seen about a hundred thousand dollar increase, uh, from what was projected. So, good numbers there, and hopefully that'll continue. The, uh, the bond payments are on track now. You know, the first revenues are, are collected or stored till we get enough to pay the bond. Um, the first one will be October first at one point three million, and then April first at six point three million. We'll make that and get the second year paid up. And with that, we'll, I'll give you some updates on the projects by program. The, the first one is the countywide digital radio system. Uh, it's on track within, within schedule and budget. Uh, we've still got a good bit of work going on with, with Stations Five, Eight, Eleven, and Billard. Some of it is in, in, in the design stage with permits, but a lot of it is actually under construction with their, their building foundations, and we got chiefs that we, then we're actually getting some tower equipment in. So, you'll see some, some towers go up at those locations as, as motorola moves forward. We've got three of the properties that are still in some form of land acquisition. At this point, not seeing any problems with it, just taking some time to work that out with off-stell gas, uh, factory shows, and fair play with the city. Uh, from a percentage standpoint, J and M are about thirty percent complete. The ambulances, we have two on order for the chief, uh, with a, a cost of about three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. They, they're in fabrication still, but they're about seventy percent complete. Hopefully, we'll be, uh, receiving those within the next couple of months. Uh, the bumper truck, uh, with a budget of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I think the vendor for that is on the agenda for, is on the- It's already been approved. So, it's, uh, chief and them are moving forward with, um, with getting that order in and, and getting that, getting that truck ordered for us. Our station three, we finally got Titus Construction onboard. We had a kickoff meeting with them last Thursday. Uh, the meeting went well. Uh, we've got some other homework to do with the temporary housing. Uh, we gotta get the final document signed with that and get the order in to get the, the temporary housing, um, in fabrication. It'll take about three weeks to get that on-site. Titus is gonna go ahead and start some work that they can do on the outside, so I don't see any issues with it slowing the project down. They can get the new renovations started and, and, and move the project forward. It's showing a March nineteenth, uh, two thousand nineteen, um, completion date. I don't, we, I don't see any problem in us beating that, if not earlier, to have the, the fire station completed. Staff vehicles, the chief has three on order, I think, one, one was an expedition that's in. And we've got two pickups, uh, they're still onboard. And with that, we'll, we'll move into transportation. We, uh, got worried last week, I think Levon did, that C W Matthews is moving in, I think, today. So, uh, that was a little bit earlier than what I think they had told us at the, at the initial meeting. We're showing a completion date of December, end of December, but I'm pretty sure they'll get that completed before then and before the holidays, so that's good news, and they'll should see them out there putting some asphalt down here soon. These next two slides are placeholders for the L-MC funding that we're tracking in SLOSS now, since we're matching, we're matching those L-MC funds with SLOSS. We'll, you'll see that, those numbers just change as, as we're bombing and get the work done throughout the year. This next slide is the Lee Road Extension Study. Uh, it's currently on what, uh, as you know, is, is ongoing. Miguel is, is, um, in some of the reoccurring meetings. It's on track, I think, to be completed in, in October. They'll have both the deliverables for the, the initial, uh, stu, uh, design study that was done at Lee Road ninety-two, and then for the, the one that was added on Lee Road, uh, back up to I twenty-one. Stewart Mill Road Intersection. So, we've got Jacobs onboard, and they've, um, they've actually started work now, they've, uh, they're out surveying the, the site, which'll take them about a week to two weeks to do that. And we're anticipating about a four to five month completion date on design. It's gonna put us somewhere around January. Uh, Miguel's already doing some, uh, and I think we reported this last month, with some of the old rideaway plans that were done back under the original design, which hopefully may come in, uh, as a benefit as we, we near completion of the design, and we can see what impacts we have on rideaway. The, this will be one of the projects that we hope to get close to being advertised around January or February. We'll, I'll, let me back up on that. It'll get it into the rideaway phase. If whatever rideaway, uh, or easements that Miguel's group has to go out and acquire, uh, we'll have to allow time for that, and we, we'll be able to go to construction. Bright Star Road is about ninety percent complete with the design Miguel, it's in the rideaway phase. Miguel's working on that, doing title searches. We don't anticipate a lot of time for that, maybe two or three months. So, this'll be another intersection that we'll have close to getting, uh, being ready for advertising as we move towards, uh, the end of the year. So, it's on track, uh, to be let, and hopefully be under construction about the first of twenty nineteen. Sweetwater Church, the IGA is on the agenda for approval with Paul and County. They're finishing up some of the, uh, minor design, uh, components of it with the, along with the traffic signal. We expect to have, uh, everything completed and, and be ready to advertise that project again towards the end of the year. We ended up, I think, with a couple parcels, small parcels that needed to be acquired, uh, with Douglas County doing one and, and Paul and County doing the other. So, good news in, on the intersections, that we're starting to make, finally to make some good progress with them. Chapel Hill Road is, is a larger project of the group. We are still in the preliminary stages with that, with, uh, with SEI, we're looking at adding sidewalk and curb and gutter on the east side of that road. And that's a side that's got the side streets and subdivisions. We're still trying to develop just some basic layouts for it, uh, and, and now they're currently going back and trying to finalize that with some more modeling of, of the road. So, we'll get that, once we get that done, we, we, our plans are is to go out to a public information meeting and show it to the public out there and text more comments, and then we can, uh, we can get this project moved into a, a design stage. Highway Five at Douglas Boulevard, uh, Miguel's currently, I've got him over in, uh, a request for a proposal to go out for design services for the, for the right turn lane on Highway Five. Uh, he's had meetings with both the city and the property owner, engaging them and, and making some plans in front, uh, and putting them on notice that we got the project coming. And so, he's got it tagged, the city's got it tagged, uh, for any, for any type of development that may occur. And he, again, he's engaged the owner and had some conversations with him. Highway ninety-two and Anawaki, um, with the cost of the project that we, we've initially looked at, uh, Miguel's working up the scoping study for this. So, I think that would be the best approach at this point. Uh, he can get it out on the street, we can get a design group in here to give us some, some, uh, some good layouts and some good cost estimates and impacts it's gonna take to, to put the road in, and then the board can make decisions on, on how to move forward with that based on budget and scope. Post-road bridges, this is the, the project that GDOT has, and I'll keep you posted as we move forward. If you remember those, it's got a lot of bridges from there with it. Uh, it may, it'll probably towards the latter part of twenty nineteen, towards the middle, before we hear anything about the contractor coming in at Douglas. But no problems with it, and they're moving forward with the design and structure on those other bridges. So, the next three are our school projects. SEI has finished the, uh, the surveying on it, so these are moving, these will move fairly quickly. Uh, they're, they're trying to do some research on rideaway and plats in front of the schools. They have a little bit difficult time coming up with that. But they're, they're small projects, and I, they anticipate having these ready, uh, again, towards the end of the year, if not the first of twenty nineteen. Uh, they will probably be ready to, um, to go out for bid for construction. There may be some, uh, some easements that'll need, that'll need, that will be needed at Chestnut Log and, um, and Lithia Springs, uh, that may slow it down some, but again, I think we're on track around the first year for those. Chestnut Middle, and then New Manchester. And then finally with transportation, Miguel's got, um, two pickups and two dumps that are on order, and then I think I'll be agenda some additional funds for some additional equipment for him. You guys can approve. And with that, we'll move into parks and recs. Gary?
We have one question for you.
Sure. All right, so, I, I, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I noticed, where do we stand with the streetlights?
Well, the worst we believe, and all of the lights are on, um, uh, a hundred percent of the lights are on, and, uh, we are waiting at this point, the only left is the, is for the invoice to come in from Greystone, which we have not seen.
The reason I ask that, but probably the past, what, fifteen months, we've talked about streetlights, streetlights, streetlights. And we're just now, it's complete, but you didn't close it out. All right, and I'm gonna bring this full circle. They're on, based on the last meeting we had, they should be on. But it, it, it took an escalation to have them come on. And, and so, it's sort of like you just, you smoothed through this. I'm gonna go back to something, and we're gonna, I'm gonna be quick about this. When we did the presentations, and some of you guys will remember this, and, um, Madam Clark, when did we have those two meetings, um, for the presentations for the program manager? Do you recall? February twentieth? February twentieth? Yeah, February twentieth, if I remember the date. And we had two present, we had two presentations for, uh, interested parties in this. And I remember, um, in those presentation, Mr. Tom Morley himself stood up right over there, and he leaned in, "Mr. Robinson, you've asked that question twice." Now, I ask everybody consistently this question, which is, if something goes wrong, not what goes right, if something goes wrong, will you be accountable? I was very specific about communication, about, okay, how are y'all gonna really handle project management? I was only, I had a very, I was, I was very refined in that question. He got it. I'm like, "No, Mr. Morley, you're okay." He said, "We, we're good. Let, let those guys that you hired answer the questions," where I was going with this. And this experience with these, these streetlights, and, and I say that is that, this, I'm, I'm disappointed, not by the, not, not by the, the actual structure itself, don't get me wrong. It's our experience. That was supposed to be a quick win. Those were, that project was on the list at the top. It was supposed to be boom, out the gate. We were excited. This, this is about level setting. This is something that, as we get into these two verticals, that we don't get here and we don't just dismiss something if somebody says, "Okay, so what's going on?" Beyond the weather, beyond all of that, it, it just was a, we just rolled, y'all rolled through this whole thing, and it was like, okay, so, are y'all listening? Like, well, where are the lights? Well, they should be on, they should be on, they should be on. I mean, I went and looked at all those tapes, it should be on, it should be on. Like, well, did you not look? I mean, I can barely see, I go out there, I see they're not on, and it was sort of like you were just, it was, don't take this personal, it was just, it was the message that came through. And we just, we expect more out of our program manager, but we're very good to say, "Okay, but our, our program management bill is getting paid every month." What, what, I mean, I thought that was so insulting. You're very good to say that, "Oh, hey, you billing us the program management, yet, what about these streetlights?" Right? Um, it, it shouldn't have, it shouldn't have taken that, and, you know, so I go out and I tell my citizens, "Well, they should be on." And I knew better, but I knew how to frame it, did not throw myself under the bus, because again, I'm looking at y'all like, "Okay, but are y'all talking?" Then when we did escalate within our own organization, I believe Director Peacock was the one that delivered me the message that, okay, it wasn't a priority. Well, how can something that you respond to not be a priority if it's at the top of the food chain? And I'm saying this on behalf of the citizens that were gracious enough to give us a SLOSS. And it just needed to be more responsiveness that, okay, I'm not here for my health, when I bring things up and we're interested in it, and it just, it, I mean, this goes all the way through, so, somebody, whether it's staff, the program manager, the, I, I, I mean, come on then. We, we're just not, the citizen, this is citizens' money. So, you have to get it, where's the accountability that says, "Hey, you know what? We should've escalated." Why did it take me to be in some branding meeting offline and sort of run into somebody? And it'd be like, "Oh, my God, we didn't know this was an issue." That bothered me. I mean, it went all the way up to the food chain of the vendor, which I'm like, "Okay, why did it take me to do that?" We've got some senior people here, you guys are paid very well, why did it take that? Why did it take that? So, I, I guess at this point, I, I don't know who can speak on behalf of the actual project itself, and I'm gonna close out my comments, because I, I don't wanna experience this again. All right, I, I think that our, all our brands are on the line here, right? The citizens see how we, like, think about how we're being treated as elected officials. I'm wondering how the citizens feel. That can't happen. Not, not for me. Like, really? Think about it. Now, the citizens are looking at this moment and saying, "Okay, so wow, look at how they treat elected officials." Right? They're non-responsive. And that's to make you sensitive to, to what this is about. Like, when, when we raised up, there should've been a natural escalation. We're not paying two point four million just to sort of sit here and give me a pound of paper. You need to know that the lights are on. Why did I have to get some, some people out, the citizens, like, "Well, can you drive roadside for me and let me know if the light's on?" Why do I have to do that? Now, I hear my job is to check and balance. Absolutely. That is my job. But yet, I'm, I'm looking for y'all to at least deliver against that. Um, it, um, I'm gonna respond, I'm, I'm gonna pause there, because I, I, I think it would only be fair to allow, um, is anybody here from Greystone? Or anybody who can speak to this experience?
Yes. Go up to the front.
Please, please come on up front, introduce yourself, Madam Chair.
Yes. Good morning, everyone. My name is Nadia Fawcett with Greystone Power. Um, I'm the VP of Engineering. And, um, I do wanna say two things. First of all, thank you for letting us partner with you. The second thing I do wanna say is that Commissioner Robinson did share some feedback with me about the project at the branding meeting. Um, I appreciate your candidness. Um, our teams got together and talked about what we could've done better. Why, why did the project take so long? I'm kind of new coming in, but we've really delved back to find out what, what took so long and how do we communicate with our partner? I would say on our side that I think the core issue is the fact that we were operating on a different timeframe than what the commissioner and maybe several others might have expected. And so, if, if anybody does project management, you know those have to match, and we have to communicate well to say, "Okay, this is where we expect the project to end, and if it doesn't end in that timeframe, you communicate on, on the adjustments to that timeframe." So, um, I would, I think Greystone, it does need to take some ownership, some ownership, and make sure that we knew the timeframe, because in all honesty, we were operating under the fact that we were pulling crews on and off, just, just like we would do for a normal lighting project. So, once we found out that this was, we needed to speed it up, and this was very time-sensitive, we dedicated wiring crews, we dedicated site crews and others to make sure we get the project done in a timely manner. So, um, so, and then we talked, and then escalated that further to get the project done. I will say there are three lights at the corner of Riverside, North River Road and, um, Riverside, that we're tying into another project, so those lights should not be on. About three lights, but the rest of the lights are burning. I've driven by there myself before I called you back, 'cause I wanted to make sure, again, that I do diligence on our part. So, um, if you do have any questions, please send a media resource, um, and we'll make sure to get it taken care of. Um, but we do take part ownership in making sure that we have an alignment in the time sensitivity of the project on board.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. You're a perfect time.
Thank you, Nadia.
Yeah. And, and so, did, for, for Morley, can you guys give us some insight as well?
Well, you know, I think it riches reported from the beginning, you know, the project was a war, uh, I think the board approved it back in July. And it was just done with a purchase, purchase order, and it was, it had already started once we got in. And as to the knowledge, there was no dates in it, there was no completion dates, and dates in it, there was no completion dates, and as any, any contract you have a contractor, that's one thing you have to fall back on, is the completion date in the contract. And there was no date in it to say the project needed to be done by December or March. But I think throughout the whole process, Rich and I stayed on it. He would ride through it every time he came over. We made several calls to Greystone, we sent emails to Greystone. Now, David Good was out with Moreland, he was out riding the project at night, he would report back to me, and I made several calls to the office myself and talked to Jessica, and it just, the work either continued, nothing got done, or when, the first, last time I talked to her, she had no idea the lights were not even working. So, they didn't, they didn't have information themselves that the lights were not working. And it's amazing how fast time just kind of progressed on, and before we know it, here we are September, and it took that long, or it took July or August to get them finished.
And I agree, we won't believe it this, but again, the consequences are just that, which is the quality is impacted, right? If you think about time, money, and scope, right? The typical experience anybody who has project management, you've got to balance them. Again, this is a set of projects, that's why we have a program manager, which means there should be a roll-up, there should be, it just doesn't go off indefinitely, this is not just ongoing operation, that's what I'm looking at you, I'm like, but it's a project. It had to have a start and end date, there had to be expectations, but the challenge was that every month you were telling me they should be on, they should be on. That's where I think that Madam Nadia Robb, the good point, is that can we just do a better job of communicating, right? And I'm going to hold, staff also has got to get this ring, because y'all know I'm upset, y'all, if they don't know my spirit, you guys knew better. You knew that, like, okay, gosh, how many times I got to say this? And it would just seem like there was no urgency, there was no, like, okay, we just, it was an insensitiveness. And I think we can do better, because again, the public doesn't have to grant us this again, and staff is not entitled to the spend. So, there's got to be a balancing act, it's just, y'all are not entitled to that SPOS, and just spending for that sake. So, if they have expectations and you're setting them, it's okay. If I didn't, I wasn't set expectation every thirty days they were going to be on. If you just told me a date, we would have managed to it, but it was just this ongoing, and here we are, and again, look how smoothly we just dismissed it, that we didn't even want to close it out, you knew I wasn't going to let that go away. But I just want to bring that out. Please, let's try to just do better, and we're just using it as not due blessing, please.
One thing I'll mention, and I want to please keep in mind, is Moreland does not have the CEI or the construction inspection on, as we move forward with other projects. That's not in our contract, it's just program management, so, and that's a key component to making sure contractors get the projects done, is the inspection part of it, and a construction manager on a project. This project was a little bit different being streetlights, it was, but obviously we've got a lot of construction to go, so we're not involved with the oversight and construction and the quality assurance on it.
Okay, wait a minute. Alright, you just, you almost got away with that one, but now you said something like, so who fills in those gaps? Now, I'm going to go back to the, we had, David Good had some role, we had to be inspecting things, and we didn't move on that, so I'm talking to my administration now. So, what are you saying, that your job is just to do, you don't inspect, you don't double back? Like, well, who's going to fill in the gap? Is that our staff that should do that, where your contract stops?
That'll be your staff, Miguel's office and...
Okay, and that's...
Maybe we can take the, yeah, something for us to think about.
We'll take off on you.
We'll just take that offline. Okay. We'll allow you to move on.
So, the, this is the Boundary Waters concession bill, and it's on the, we have a low bid coming on it, it's on the September agenda for approval, and also the Stockfield Lighting is on the June for approval for low bid. Hopefully, we'll get those under construction as soon as we get the contracts executed. Deer Lake Park Two's court resourcing lighting, Carter and Lockins is currently surveying that, it should be completed, and we'll be moving forward with the design of that over the next month or so. And then the multipurpose rec center, Gary's been working with the Parks Committee, and we've got three schemes that he's developed along with us, meeting with the architect. We've got a public information meeting Thursday to display those, and then we'll be coming back to the, back to the board for final decision. Right now, until we get a final decision on one of the schemes, the architect is on hold.
Alright, real quick on that, just to clarify, and staff can weigh in if they want to. So, what will happen on Thursday, which is at the Aquatic Center, what do you plan to accomplish? How will you facilitate? Who's in the room on that day? And, get somebody.
The architect will be there, Pete Sutton will be there, and I'll be present, and it'll be primarily to have the three schemes on display, and just basically to open it up, maybe have some short discussions at the beginning, and just kind of allow people an opportunity to come in and review the schemes and provide us some feedback, provide the board some feedback.
Right, and that timeframe is from what?
Thursday from six to eight.
Six to eight, so if they don't hear your opening commentary at the very beginning, they are allowed to just come in and out and look up on the storyboard and say something, or they got to be there, I'm trying to get a feel, so, because people come at different times, and they don't want to get there, y'all are already closed out and gone because you closed out your speech. How's it going to work?
Well, I think staff will be there till, from six to eight, and maybe have an opening for those that are there at the beginning, and we can, you know, just, it'll kind of continue throughout the two hour.
Okay. I just did want to make sure, because we had that experience with our buses, where we were closing out early, people got there toward the back end, and they didn't get to give their input, and like, well, their input is important. This one right here is that we talked about public engagement, that people need to have the opportunity, we've got to go all the way, no matter what it is, because we're here for the citizens. And so, I know that we're busy, and we're after hours with staff and so forth, but the citizens are paying for all of this, and so we need to keep that window of time open, and we need to be, have a process in which, no matter when they walk in the door, whether it's at six oh two or, you know, seven fifty-nine, we've got to cap them. Can you be sensitive to that, please?
Yes.
Eight oh one, we're going though.
I understand.
The senior center is, we've already had one public information meeting on it, it's a little bit earlier than we did with the rec center. I was not able to, Tim David was there, I think he got some, there was some good input that came in through that, and we're meeting with the architect tomorrow to share those with him and do some more brainstorming on footprint. Our goal is similar to what we did with the rec center, and that's come out with maybe two or three schemes that we can start putting some pieces together, and then we'll do another, we have one other public information meeting scheduled, and then we'll hopefully have those ready for that. Bill Arc and Fair Play Vote, we have the designs ready for the concession buildings, and we're going to put that out for bid over the next couple of weeks, and this is just for the buildings, and we'll get that in, and we'll be back to you for, once the review committee looks at those for a recommendation on the bid for those. Fair Play Lights replacement is also ready to go out to bid, and we'll be, it'll be right back behind the concession building. Those are designed, the plans ready to go out for bid. And last is Gary's equipment, and I think it's on the agenda for approval. And the last slide is our program management expenses, and year-to-date approved invoices is three hundred and twelve thousand. And that was, I think David Good has a short presentation on vendors, if you have time.
Yes, David, good job. This is good, please come forward. My Monday pad is, we're going to get a lot of use today. This is great.
Alright, again, my name is David Good, I'm the SPOS Communications Director, and we have promised you guys that we're going to talk about participation, especially since we're trying to get a lot of the local vendors to come on board. So, what you see is that this is as of the end of August. We have fifty-nine current vendors, eighteen of which are located here in Douglas County, nineteen of them are located within thirty miles of Douglas County, we consider those to as local, and then there's ten vendors that's more than thirty miles out, and then there's twelve vendors out of the state of Georgia. Right now, as you can see by this pie chart, sixty-two percent of them we consider as local, meaning those that are here in Douglas County, are within thirty miles, and then the other forty-eight percent are located either somewhere else in Georgia or outside of the state. So, the staff, as well as Moreland, Russell, and myself, we're making sure that we are actually engaging local vendors out of here. A lot of times, we do run into people who are from Carroll County, that's right there on the border, because they do a lot of work here, so we also engage with them as well. These are some of the local vendors, amount of contracts, I wasn't able to fit every single one of them on there because of space, but I believe this is fourteen of the, I think this is sixteen of eighteen vendors. Right now, you see one that's added on is a Douglas County L N I G, L M E, because of that, around five hundred and fifty-nine thousand, I decided we could go ahead and put it in there because they are, you guys are local, so I just want to make sure they're able to capture that. And then these are the percentage of active SPOS, right now we're at eighty percent non-minority and twenty percent that are minority. And that's the end of that report. And the main reason that we actually even started doing this is that we wanted to make sure as we engage in the public, we're letting them know that there are opportunities within the SPOS. One of the problems that we do have is that a lot of times when we first came out, we told some of these smaller vendors who could not get some of these larger projects to go ahead and maybe try to come on as a sub or something like that, but because I'm not sure there's a way to track people, there's right now not a way to track those that are subs. That means that if we do a project with C W Matthews or someone, if they end up using someone else, there's no way for us to internally track that. So, if there is a way for us to internally track that, because this information, the information on the last part might end up looking different, especially when it comes to local. So, right now, that's it on the vendor spot. Are there any questions on that before I move on to the next part?
Any questions, you can move on.
Okay, and then, so therefore, as you guys know, Terry mentioned that we did have a meeting back on September sixth that was about the senior center, and I appreciate both Commissioner Malkin and Commissioner Mitchell for coming out. It was over at Cornerstone Baptist Church, over there District One. We had about, maybe about fifty to fifty-five to sixty people that came out. People came in starting a little bit before four o'clock, and the last one that came in was at six fifty-nine.
Right, right.
So, right before we were able to close out, so we were still there, so I can guarantee you guys that I'm going to stay there, you know, for the time until all questions are asked. So, on the senior center, the very next meeting, of course, will end up being October fourth, and that's going to be over at First Baptist of Lithia Springs. So, that would be the second meeting of this public engagement. At that meeting, we're planning, like you said, to have some type of format there, so people can actually see what it is that we're going to do. Again, on this Thursday, we will be having the community engagement on the community center. That one is going to be a little bit more robust, because we'll actually have something for people to look at, people to make comments on, and then right after that, once that meeting is over, I believe Gary's team is going to take those projects over to Deer Lake Park and actually have them on display there, so people can make comments over at Deer Lake Park. And then at some point in time after that, have a meeting that will maybe begin the community again, so we can go ahead and get, set an architect to go ahead and start designing it, so we can get that deal out. So, that is it on that part. Are there any other questions?
Yeah, I want to clarify that. Clarify the dates, we had not heard this publicly, so I understand we have something on September twentieth, which is going to be at Boundary Water, which is the formal public engagement input on the multipurpose community center. I heard you just say something about Deer Lake. Can I just say that for the record, what the timeframe and when and where, say it again?
Okay, right after that meeting on Thursday, those three displays will be taken over at Deer Lake Park, and there will be a comment section there for people, the community to go up there and look at it, and actually make comments on there, have like a drop into a comment card, into a comment box.
So, that's a standing exhibit, is that what I'm hearing? So, it's not, it's just there, you've got a drop box?
Yes.
Okay, alright, I just want to clarify, and how long will that run?
Two weeks.
Two weeks? So, from the twenty-first to, from that Friday, from this Friday to two Fridays?
Two Fridays, exactly.
I just want to make sure I captured that and published it, so we tell citizens they can go weigh in.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? I think we're good.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Mitchell? Good stuff, though, by the way, guys, and also, I don't know if you want to share, we got, from the programming perspective, that we've got our SPOS to the minute updates that's kind of for, that we have to ask to kind of deal with that, if you kind of speak to that, and I got a couple of other questions on that side of that.
Okay, well, not too long ago, we actually had, we're doing our quarterly SPOS up to the minute programming that's on DC twenty-three. Myself and Terry, we both spoke with Commissioner Mitchell during the interview, and basically, we were giving updates to those projects that were the most current, you know, including Boundary Waters, and Stockfield concession stands, the two vertical items coming on board, both the senior center and the senior center. He spoke on Motorola, and as you saw on the display, the county, as far as the money numbers are, the outside of local is going to be a little bit higher, because that's fifteen point five million dollars that's going towards Motorola and the radio system. So, those are all things that we spoke on, and we spoke at the area where the community center is going, over there at Boundary Waters.
Correct. Which I think are great things to be publicized and keep people up to date as to where the SPOS, and where their opinion is being spent. You spoke about a shortfall, and you can hang around, you talked about a shortfall that we're now at roughly about fourteen million dollars, I think we're...
Total, yeah.
Yeah, overall, so if we continue this two point two and get to the holidays, and my life and others start shopping even more, we could take that number, that number could kind of increase.
Certainly, you get a date. Right, so we're at the beginning of the program.
Go from a shortfall to a positive.
Yes, to a positive. But that's a good thing to note, that the SPOS projects, the possibilities of them, when we get into that line of, what we're saying, the bottom of the barrel here, it's a good possibility that we probably will still do good, even with the numbers that we're dealing with now. But if it increases, that we can probably capture a couple of other projects, possibly. I'm not trying to, you know, sell anybody any hopeful dreams, but that is a good possibility if we continue down this path, that right now we're looking thus far.
Yes, and considering, like, we've been talking about some of the bids we've got to come in, hopefully the revenues will stay up to offset some of that.
But let's be, let's be honest, too, the cost of doing business has gone up.
Sure.
So, realistically, from the Parks and Rec side of it, from Malkin and myself, we're looking at some real numbers that we just have to be honest and understand that that's what they are. Not that we, you know, we want quality, but do understand that the cost of moving dirt, concrete, and others, it's starting to kind of go in a different direction. That's just the cost of doing business. So, we kind of expect the numbers that we're going to bring to the board for this board down the road. There's going to be some interesting projects and numbers that realistically are what we're going to have to deal with. If not, we talked about at committee level, either we're going to do some shrinking or some square feet, square footage, or redesigns, or, I mean, there are some other possibilities, but I think the committee is going to look at possibly saying, these are what the numbers are, and realistically, if you want the project and what we anticipate and what we expect for what our citizens expect, and we need to kind of stay where we are and deal with the additional costs that we're dealing with, just the cost of doing business, right? Correct? Malkin, he'll probably chime in like, okay. Alrighty, the radio system. Okay, you spoke about a couple of things, where we're looking at some commitments that you're having some, I won't call it difficulties, but to kind of move that project along, I mean, help me out again with that statement you made in earlier?
They're on track. I want to hear from Jay and Mark, I think we're on track to close at least two of them. I'm having some problems with what the city of Douglas will do on that one, what they may or may not decide to do, but they're moving forward.
We have two property acquisitions, two easements, we're working through those.
Right.
We're really close on both of them.
Yeah, and that's kind of sort of what's not slowing the project down, but it can't move it until we kind of get that part of it.
Those two towers are pretty much at a halt.
Understood, until we kind of get there, and I know about those projects, which we've been in executive session talking about them. Okay, the other one, the sidewalk projects. You mentioned that there... Um, you mentioned that there, you, you, you probably won't, won't let them out till about the end of the year or, or the first of the, of the year. Help me give you that.
Yeah, based on the, the meeting we just had with them. So they've, they've completed the surveys and gotten all the, the data they needed for the plan. But we anticipate them to take.
Is that all of the sidewalk projects or just?
That's all three schools.
Okay.
They're both, I mean, all three will be designed at one time and, and we can make a decision at some point whether we want to let all three of them together or let them out separately. But it'll, it'll take them through probably the fall to design it.
Yeah.
And get the plans ready.
Yeah.
And then at that point, depending on whatever easements that we need to purchase or we need to go after, uh, we'll be in that phase. And yeah, they're going to have a short fuse at that point, which we, we may be close to seeing it being led first quarter of the year, all three of them.
And when, when we do that, that's when we could look at some more possible, possible of those local and or, um, uh, these projects are smaller enough or combined enough to where maybe the local vendors might kind of engage. If the dollars and cents, if the yield to the dollar works out and I, and I know it's about dollars and cents.
Right.
Correct?
And that was a go from the start, was try to pick up some of the local vendors.
Got it, okay. Um, and again, if you would, just for the record again, announce those meeting dates that we got for the senior citizen center that we've already done. But we got the next one that's coming up. And clearly, let's make again for the record, the, uh, the Boundary Waters one, so we can kind of make sure we put that on the record again. So we, so we don't probably know kind of where we're going. And with, with the senior citizen center, we, we're coming with, um, the mere fact of what, what you are. With a blank sheet of saying, we want your, uh, as we did at Cornerstone, to kind of give them a good gauge of what they would like to anticipate. Now, do you understand that it's about dollars and cents? We, we want the world out of that senior citizen. Plus we've got to understand that we've got a, a, a small lot that we're having to place this particular building on if by chance that works out, you know, with the shape and movement and design of that. So just again, the dates and that they are true, understand that they're welcome and their ideas and their thoughts and maybe they don't want to break the table. It's always welcome, so.
Okay, well, uh, back on September sixth, we actually had the first, uh, public engagement for the senior center. And they came there with a blank sheet. We just had a couple of comments from the surveys that we did earlier in the year. People came out, uh, they, they, I've just known they made their displeasures, you know, when they felt about parking and all those different things. And then we let the public know at that point in time that there will be another meeting, also on Thursday on October fourth, from four to six P M. Over at, um, First Baptist of Fifty-First Springs. And so that, and at that one, that's where they'll actually have all the information they took from the.
And for clarity, this is just not for District One. This is for Douglas County. So we come out and, 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 and have your, your voice heard.
Right, and that was the good thing about that meeting is that people from various parts of the county, um, came there. Cause one person, you know, came all the way from, uh, you know, from Mural Lake. And they were just talking about that, you know, they were glad to see, you know, see something coming above and sort of be walking in and play pickleball and different, you know, different things. And so that was a good one for that one. And then of course, on Thursday, this coming Thursday, from six to eight P M, that's where we're going to have the, you know, where Boundary Waters Quality Center is going to be for the multi-purpose center. And at that one, that's going to be more the public engagement, you know, to look at what has been put down and saying, well, this is what we can do. And it's going to, maybe a dollar amount in square footage is going to be there even the build out. So if you build something that's on a medium size, it'll show a build out of bigger. And then right after that meeting, we'll take those displays over to Dearlik Park. And then for two weeks, have that there and then people can make their comment cards at that multi-purification.
And in order to, I want to kind of reiterate that is that we're doing everything we can to assure for those who want to have a, uh, take it this, which I'm, I'm assuming everybody in Douglas kind of would like to have what they would like to see and have at the senior citizen center to include at Boundary Waters. So your input, your, your information is definitely, you know, warranted. Uh, I did also add from the programming department that we at least make sure that this goes up on the website. Uh, any exposure that we can get by sending out email blasts, which I normally do and I, I would probably assume that all the other teams do the same thing as to these particular dates. So those that would want to attend, uh, know the exact time, know the exact dates. And if they can't get there during the timeframe that we offer, that using the Boundary Waters piece, that it'll be there for at least two weeks, that you can still comment. Now, we won't be there to talk about the displays, but at least if you can look, read and understand and you would like to see X, then write it down, put it in the, the comment box. Because we'll come back to the programming, not the programming, we need to come back to the Parks and Rec to kind of validate all of the, the comments. And we plan to read them all. We plan to understand what they all are asking and then come up to this, this resolve of what this really will look like or what this really will become. So again, thank you guys for all the hard work and all the human diligence. I just want to make sure that we share that with the general public. So outside of that, I'll, you're back.
And then, um, the very last thing is that now that we're seeing these intersections, such as an intersection in Chapel Hill and the same with, um, Highway Five and Douglas Boulevard, there would be also opportunity in order to do public comments on those once we, you know, get to a part on there where we feel that we can turn to the public with the design. So they'll know what's coming, when those streets are going to start changing. So I appreciate you guys' time.
Thank you so much. We're going to move right along, so thank you all so much for the presentation. Our Board of Commissioners, I ask that you take a look at, uh, minutes for tomorrow and we will approve accordingly. The administration administrator, do you have a comment or anything?
No.
Okay, and next, uh, also we have a block proclamation tomorrow, uh, recognizing the graduate chapter of Sigma, Omega, Omega, Alpha, Kappa, Alpha. So that'll be done tomorrow. So I'll move to tab number five, which is our business item. Authorization to approve the livable centers initiative, L C I amendment to the previously approved Sweetwater master plan for submission to the Atlanta Regional Commission. Uh, Ron Roberts, how are you doing?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you very much for the opportunity. So I wanted to go back and, uh, kind of update where we are. This document was approved by the Board of Commissioners in July of last year. Moving forward, um, it was, uh, in looking at it in the beginning of the year, realizing this is a document, um, that could very, very much play an important role as a livable centers initiative, which could open us up for some transportation funding specifically in the Sweetwater corridor. So July tenth of this year, we reached out to Henry Horn, who had made the initial plan and, and, um, granted permission to move forward with updating this so that it fits into the L C I format specifically as it relates to the transportation five-year study. Um, so that could be incorporated into the document and then brought back before today. The, um, the project manager on this has been Beth Turner and Eric Bosman, they're both with me today. And one of them will both be here tomorrow for the, uh, commission meeting as well. So this is really, that's what this is. We, we asked in July to move forward to create the components which are included in your packet. And we want to redo the document and then submit it as a livable centers initiative to the Atlanta Regional Commission. Do you have any questions for me or the, the project leaders on this?
Okay, any questions? I'll, Commissioner Baker.
Yes, Ron, uh, last time it was presented to us, we talked about the roundabout right there for the trucks that have to do. And we wondered why we had to have a roundabout because the other two roads leading off of it are not truck roads. So didn't we talk about taking that, that roundabout out?
Uh, the, the projects were, uh, reorganized. Um, I know that it still appears in there as a, as a, as a future potential. Uh, the projects were actually reorganized for the purposes of that from July of last year until, until now. We've had so many rezonings and things that have come through in that area that have actually shaped what would happen. So, I mean, uh, moving forward, the, the projects that are in here, Kyle would probably, would say that they may change in some shape or fashion, but they've been prioritized with the staff's recommendation, uh, after sitting down with Miguel. But as far as like the removal of the, uh, of the, the roundabout altogether, I don't know if we really want to do that.
Doctor Trailer to go around the roundabout and would just go straight through, especially since the leadoff roads are no truck roads.
Right, and, uh, you know, uh, you, that is a recommendation that was approved already in the original plan. We didn't really want to alter or do anything other than it's just to beef it up and make it an application for livable centers initiative. So the old projects that were in Project A that were approved, you know, we didn't really want to change those. That would be, uh, kind of like having to revisit the whole document, I think, in and of itself.
Well, the, the document itself just listed from a, an action plan and a funding standpoint, just listed as an intersection improvement? Ultimately, it's up to your public works folks to determine what the format of the intersection improvement needs to be. But for this purpose and to get it in line for funding, it's just an intersection improvement, the, the format's left open.
All right, okay, I yield back. Thank you. Any questions, uh, Vice Chairman Roberts?
Yeah, and, and, again, I'm, I'm sensitive and I appreciate all the work just being done here and the fact that you brought this around to try to enhance the Sweetwater Plan Master Plan with this L C I component. And so it's well done. You know, I, this area is, is, is improving, obviously, uh, from what it was about three, four, five years ago, when this, this Board of Commissioners declared that area slum and blight, right? In that, it, we know coming out of recession, there need to be redevelopment in that whole corridor. But a lot of work has been done and we appreciate the, the S F O S obviously putting ten million in that area, um, as a dedicated source. Because it was important, it, it aged, right? We, we know that there's a lot of congestion that comes along Camp Creek, Thornton Road, I twenty right there. And the fact that it, it's showing that there's a commitment to that area goes a long way. Uh, we've got residents that are living over there. We've got commercial businesses that are committed there. They put money into that. And so the fact that I, and I'm, I'm highlighting, uh, we were just at a, um, a ribbon cutting for one of the hotelers, um, over there. Um, some of you may know Dr. Makesh Patel, who, um, is the proprietor of the Hilton Hotel, who, um, where we hold our constitutional officer meeting every year, um, in, in, in that hotel, built a new hotel right next door. And for that person to sit there, renovate an entire hotel and build a new one at the same time, it's just, I want to, I, I want to highlight the fact that we're, we're trying to enhance the whole area and we having to protect it. Um, I, I guess to that point about congestion. And you're, Matt, and I, I said all that to say because all of this is related, um, and, and to my, my guy's point, I hear her quite, quite, quite clearly on certain areas. In the plan, um, how will we deal with though, where we're opening up so much? We're still, I, I still haven't heard the truck problem solved. We continue to track the light industrial because of the master plan over there. But what is coming down the pipe that you can share so far? Cause all I'm hearing is light industrial and I'm hearing truck traffic. Uh, I know the master plan, I, I get that. We're saying this for the record because you still got citizens that they're seeing a huge commercial input over there? How are we balancing that? And I'm just asking a question.
Well, the, uh, you know, the county and the city both adopted the quality growth overlay and that's very specific in how it lays out safety components between the residential and the, the infrastructure of commercial and industrial in that corridor. So there, there's that component that's in there already. Um, and moving forward with, uh, with, to, to see actually what comes in, and I've had some discussions with Miguel, uh, on the, that's how we reordered the, the, the list of projects. And, and that's, that's a very big highlight of what the funding from the Atlanta Regional Commission for the L C I would actually be, would be to, they're looking for this, the safety components, they're looking for those, that, uh, that border and differentiation between the residential and the commercial industrial so that they can both live well in this, in this area. And one thing I did forget to mention, because this was adopted by the board in July of last year, and we went through, just finished the comprehensive transportation plan, which we sent over to D C A, uh, last work session. Um, the, this document is also included in the consideration of that comprehensive land use plan going forward. So that it's a holistic look at all the, the, the integrations that would occur or could occur.
Well, well, well done. No need to belabor that. I mean, you, you answered my final question was, are, is everything being aligned? It sounds like it is because we do have the comprehensive plan. We do have all these other elements, but it looks like Madam Chair, that he's ready for ours, he's, he's got it, so I, yeah.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to tab number, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
We'll move to tab number six, approval of the federal transit administration mandate with Title Six nondiscrimination program for the multi-modal transportation services connect Douglas. Uh, we have no just to be the walking this morning, understanding.
Good morning, again, I'm here for, request an approval of our Title Six nondiscrimination program and policy for the multi-modal transportation division services. And we have to update this policy every three years and this is our year.
Okay.
And I believe you have, y'all should have a copy out there.
Any, any questions for Ms. Walker? Okay. Thank you, thank you. Okay, tab number seven, authorization to award a contract to the, to the Loos Group to provide and install a new electronic content management system for a total cost of eighty-two thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars. And authorized chairman to sign all related documents pending final review. Director Peacock?
Yes, ma'am. On that, in, on June the fifth, we's, uh, released a request for proposal for vendors to submit proposals for a new electronic content management system. Uh, the due date was Friday, July the thirteenth. We received eleven proposals that ranged from fifty-eight thousand all the way up to six hundred and fifty thousand to implement this new, um, system that we need. Uh, there were several evaluation committee meetings that included, uh, our, um, director of, uh, for document records retention in the, in the county as well as for, from the, um, voter registration office and other members of the staff, uh, we, as well as the I T director. Uh, and we're bringing to the commission today that request to allow us to award the contract to the Loos Group for eighty-two thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Demonstrations were made by a couple of the vendors and we feel that this vendor would best meet the needs of the county as we attempt to, um, maintain and be able to access the documents of the county.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the board? Commissioner Baker?
Okay, what is this?
This is, um, this is the system that, um, Aubrey Britt will use for all of the electronic documents. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, you called it something else that, that long and you didn't know what it was.
The electronic content management system.
And it did go through our committee, uh, technology committee.
We actually have the letter dated August the third.
Well, now that I know what it is, I know it went through our committee. I didn't know what you were talking about at first. So I yield back.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to tab number eight. Tab number eight is authorization to award a contract to integrated construction for the construction of the concession stand at Boundary Waters Park for the total cost of seven hundred and nine thousand seven hundred and forty-seven dollars and thirty-four cents to be funded through the twenty-sixteen S F O S funds as recommended by the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee and authorized chairman to sign all related documents. Uh, Director Peacock again?
Yes, ma'am. The due date for the bids for the, uh, construction of the concession stand was Friday, July the thirteenth. We received four bids that ranged from seven hundred and nine thousand all the way up to nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand. Again, the, the evaluation committee consisting of Parks and Rec, myself and the other members of the county staff, as well as the, uh, the Parks and Recs committee is recommending that we, uh, that the board allow us to award the contract to integrated construction for seven hundred and nine thousand seven hundred and forty-seven dollars and thirty-four cents. Uh, we believe that, that they have the expertise and the experience needed to provide us with an excellent building.
Okay, any questions for the board? Now, I was going to move on to the next tab, I'm, oh, I'm sorry.
This includes restaurant and concession.
Yes, ma'am.
So this is going to be about the price for all the other parks that we're going to reach out in the ballpark.
Well, this, this is really going to be structured, it, it's going to service both the football field and the soccer field.
You've got two concessions.
You got two concessions and, and, uh, two, the bathrooms are the same, but you also have some upstairs meeting rooms, uh, as well as the, uh, press box.
That's what I'm saying, this is kind of in the ballpark for the other parks. Just try to estimate about Fair Play and.
The other parks are, we believe will be cheaper because this is a dual service building. I think some of the expenses that we've heard may be three hundred and fifty thousand dollars or more or less for the individual parks at Fair Play. And does that sound three fifty, three hundred thousand?
Six hundred.
Six hundred each? Okay, six hundred each. So, yes, any questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, I will say it kind of set our, our committee back on our heels when we, we heard this price. So we, we explored some options. Uh, you know, can we, uh, we do the second floor later, renovate the second floor? That was the, the large one that I, that I call in memory. And, uh, the consensus was it wasn't going to save us that much money. And the consensus was it wasn't going to save us that much money. And I would say like mid, mid, you know, five figures or something like that. Wasn't going to save us a lot of money. We figured we'd just go ahead and bite the bullet. We're going to run into this, this through many of the SPOS projects. We're hoping for a continued uptrend in, in the SPOS collections because the construction costs, concrete, steel and everything else, they're going to continue to go up. Hopefully, you know, for the benefit of the entire country and the county, they'll continue to go up. I want to wish, wish ill on, on the economy so we can save some money on a, on a concession stand. So, but we did look at some options and it just didn't seem plausible. I yield back.
Okay, Commissioner Mitchell.
And I'll just add to Vice Chair of Parks and Rec, that this cost per square feet is, is going up. So I don't want her to get the, Commissioner to not get the wrong perception that, you know, that it costs, I mean, it's going to be a saving somewhere that, that is going to cost us doing business. Steel, concrete and everything else per square feet when we go down there, when we look at anything that we're building, when we talk about brick and mortar down the road. So I think these numbers of what we came up with that said, you know, this, who's going to save somewhere between 30,000 or 40,000 dollars? So why, why, why not just eat back and deal with the quality of what we want or what, what we anticipate that those that are expecting the best out of the SPOS dollars? So let's go ahead and, you know, we'll deal with that accordingly. So we just kind of move forward with the particular project that the 709. So, yes, we did talk about some other ways of building something later, building it, you know, shorting out, shrinking it down or building coed bathrooms. I'm just kidding. But, but at the end of the day, we had to come up with some, we had to realistically, realistically look at the true numbers and, and they really are going up and down. That just wasn't possible in this. So I yield back.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yeah, I, I think this is worthy of a policy debate because it's, this is, I'm rather have a conversation regarding a SPOS than a general fund. So, I mean, obviously in keeping these two separate, we're blessed to have a SPOS because to have a general fund conversation with this, that would be real tough. All right, that being said, listen to the narrative. Listen to what, what was just said earlier on this, by our program manager is that it's our, or the tax conversation, taxes are coming in, that everything is growing, what, 1%? 1% growth. Think about wages of the citizens only growing 1%. But if inflation outstrips that, the upside, so I'm like, I'm listening to y'all, like, guys, again, I mean, and I get, every committee is going to be a little bit different. I'm not suggesting we need to have a common rule set regarding this. But I anticipate, like, we're hoping, like, no, guys, the wages are not going up as fast as inflation. It doesn't work that way. And so that means that you're going to, I mean, so we're hoping, you know, let's plan for, make an assumption about what that growth is going to be, right? Else you're going to have to, things that are on the list, down the list, just can't get done because you've got other stuff that are up the list that's a priority that has a higher cost. Let that be, let that be our consensus trade off on this, our consensus rule. Get the power we want. Because now you've got a higher cost, it costs you 1.5 versus $1 million, that's fine. That means that whatever's downstream at a half million just gets, it gets pushed down. We're not required to do that. We did this by percentages. So there's not some implied, oh, God, we made this prompt. No, we didn't. So we've got room to do that, but I'm, I'm just saying, don't, right, I'm with you. The economy is going to keep growing, right? Commercial is going to be, you know, inflation, they can, aluminum, everything else is going to kick in. But people, our salaries are not going up, they're going up barely, right? So no, they're doing good, they can spend a little more and there are some raises, guys, inflation is going up high. I mean, we're, are y'all not looking at this? That's what I'm like, okay, this is just more of a, let's be sensitive that we understand the variables. It's not a sky is falling, but it's like, okay, watch this, guys. That's why I said try to have a hedge against as it goes up, you know, there's implied savings that we got, it's like, steady, guys, steady. But it's just where this, I mean, you guys know what you're doing in your committees and I'll be flexible in working with you guys as it comes across. So I give.
Okay, thank you. All right, now we move on to tab number nine. Tab number nine, authorization to award a contract to West Georgia Lighting, Inc. Corporation for the installation of new lighting at the Bounder Waters Soccer Field for the total cost of $285,913. Unauthorized Chairman to sign all related documents. Director Peacock again.
Yes, ma'am. This is the second part of the work that we want to have done out at Bounder Waters. We've been talking about lighting the soccer fields. We postponed that, bringing it to the commission until we had a firm, a good price on what it would cost to build a concession stand. So now since we know that, we, we got competitive bids on the lighting, West Georgia Lighting for an LED, all LED bid, theirs was $295,913, which is considerably less than the other vendor. So we're recommending that we go with West Georgia Lighting to install LED lighting for that amount of money, $295,913.
Okay. Any questions for the board? Sounds like it's pretty self-explanatory. Thank you so much. We'll move to tab number 10, authorization to accept the Georgia Beautiful Foundation Little Law Enforcement Grant in an amount of $900 to amend the external affairs budget and authorize the Chairman to sign all related documents. Director Stanley.
Good morning Commissioners. I came before you in August of 2018 to ask to, of permission to apply for this grant. We have been awarded $900 to hold the Little Law Enforcement Workshop grant, I mean workshop. We will be partnering with Keep Douglas Field Beautiful. We'll be bringing a speaker from the Georgia Department of Natural Resources to give training to all our law enforcement officers from anywhere from highway patrol to the sheriff, to our local police officers, to our code enforcement, and it will be open to the citizens. So we just asked for permission to accept the grant.
Okay. Any questions for the board? Matt, this pretty self-explanatory is good. That answers in response to myself and Commissioner Taylor, we have, and so we said, when we put those signs back out, then it's a fine regarding the litter. And this allows larger signs, but she said training was required first. So thank you for moving this along. Tab number 11, authorization to accept the Georgia Department of Agriculture Dog and Cat Stabilization Grant in an amount of $6,100 and amend the animal services budget and authorize the Chairman to sign all related documents. Director McMillan, good morning.
Yes, we're excited to receive this grant of $6,100 from the Georgia Department of Agriculture. It's specifically to be used to sterilize dogs and cats made available for adoption to our citizens. So this helps us subsidize those adoptions so that we can lower our adoption costs and prevent barriers to adoption.
Okay. Any questions for the board? Commissioner Bauch, here.
Getting off script a little bit here, would you give us the status of the occupancy at the shelter?
We have 244 animals at this time. 144 of those are cats and the rest are dogs.
How many total are you here?
244, which is a high capacity for us right now. So we're in early season and we're working hard to provide promotions to see that our animals are adopted as we say.
All right, then put in context that do we have any empty pens?
Not very many.
Okay. I yield back.
Commissioner Bauch.
I mean, I, I have the same question with, when we had this conversation, because I reached out to Director McMillan regarding this recently, just as a, you know, a check and balance as I do. So we're at capacity. Are we, do we have any euthanizations? Do we, this?
Our live release rate right now is at 89%, which is very good. This is one of the highest in the state. We are not euthanizing adoptable animals at this time. We're able to work, we'll throw promotions with volunteers and rescues to keep that flow going, to get them in and out. We are picking up a large volume of animals right now. So euthanizing would be animals that are severely injured that we can't remedy or severely aggressive animals that we can adopt out.
Okay. The reason I ask that, I remember when we were going, you guys remember when we were going through recession, people were just like throwing in their keys or just throwing in their pants. We had that experience with our old animal shelter, you know, it's much, much, much smaller. What's driving this spike now? I mean, gee, I thought we, we built this to have capacity and I'm trying to reconcile, again, I'll lean to my peers who have a little bit more insight around animals, but what's driving this, right? Because we're supposed to have a bigger shelter and it, so one, answer that question. Two, do you have the personnel to support it? Now, I'll yield after that.
We have hired some temporary personnel to help us through this increase. We hope that the increase doesn't continue past the summer. We've had a lot of kittens come in, some puppies, but we're also picking up a lot of dogs off the street that are stray. One of the most, the best things at healthy shelter is return to owner rate. Right now it's at 28%, which is very high, but we want that to be a lot higher. So we're working on solutions to help our animals get back home to their owners and we're launching a new virtual pet website. It'll be a virtual shelter online so citizens can look for their pets online at any time and they can notify us if their pet is in the shelter and get that pet back to them.
That's good.
That's good. That's great. Okay. Virtual, that's great. Okay. Well, well, thank you so much, Director McMillan. We'll move on to tab number 12, which is authorization to approve a strategic alliance memorandum that the United States Small Business Administration authorized the Chairman to sign all related documents. Director Stanley, and also I believe we have our Executive Director of the Chamber here today as well. So if you could go, if you may have a question for me as well. Director Stanley, could you just enlighten us?
Thank you. Good morning again Commissioners. So in February of 2018, President Trump appointed Ashley Bell, former Hall County Commissioner, to be our Regional Administrator for the U.S. Small Business Administration. One of his focuses is reaching out to a lot of the local and state officials to try to foster better cooperation between the administration and the local government. So he, I've been working with him and his district director, as well as State Representative William Bodie and the President of our chamber, to try to bring those resources to Douglas County. What you have before you is a memorandum that just simply asks for Douglas County to enter into a strategic alliance with the Small Business Administration to make sure that we can adequately get those resources here to help better get our small businesses involved, get more funding and also to get just better participation.
Do you have, you have comments?
I don't really have anything. I don't really have anything else to add other than, I mean, our mission of the chambers to support and promote businesses, businesses for the advancement of our community. So this is just a kind of another piece of our toolkit to be able to help do that on a bigger level, so.
Okay. Any questions for the board? I think it's, it's great. Thank you all so much. You have a comment?
No, I mean, it turns you rattled a little bit. Yeah, no, thank you, Vice Chair. And really, again, I'm glad to hear Ashley Bell's ascension as our regional. As you guys recall, when I first came on board, Terry Dennison was the district director with Small Business Administration, promoting incubators back during recession and obviously it's 10 years later, I think we're ripe for true growth outside of, you know, what I call T-shirt companies. There's nothing wrong with my, my sister who, you know, does, but we're looking for something that's really, can be in the Atlanta Business Chronicle, can really be scalable, really be taxable, etc. But this here, what's your next step? What, what comes out of this? I mean, I recognize the initiatives going on with, are you at liberty to talk about what?
Sure, yes.
Representative Bodie is thinking and with the, just.
Yes, I will. So the first, the first step in order to get the alliance going was to get strategic alliance memorandums with the county and the city. And I believe the city manager will be presenting this to the city council either today or sometime this week. And then after those memorandums are signed, then they will get partnership agreements with the chamber and possibly economic development. One of the things that we do have in the works is a, is a forum or a, some sort of event where people from State Representative William Bodie's district will be able to come and there will be speakers from the SBAs, different speakers from different economic development authorities, Connect South Fulton, Select Fulton, a lot of different authorities will be there speaking. And we will also have, there'll be lenders on hand, lenders who do SBA-backed loans will be on hand to be able to give information to people from the district on how to apply for loans. There'll also be a session on how to do a business plan. There'll be actually someone instructing people, giving them basic information on how to do a one-page business plan. So it's basically working with our local officials, they'll also be asking some of our local officials to be on some of those panels, getting information to our citizens on how they can better cooperate with our local government and our authorities on how they can do business. So that's the, the next step is actually getting that event together and that event is scheduled for October 20th, I believe between 9:00 and 2:00, at the Georgia International Center, the one by the airport. And then we will also bring something closer to Douglas County in the future, but that will be open to citizens from Douglas County and all of the other citizens from District 62, which includes South Fulton as well.
Okay. You can send all states to the board, Commissioners, so we.
Yes, I will.
Okay. Thank you so much both of you all. We'll move on to the next item. Tab number 13, authorization to use the SPOS equipment funds to purchase lawn maintenance equipment at a total cost of $13,414.92 as recommended by the Parks and Recreation Oversight Committee and authorize the Chairman to sign all related documents. Director Duce.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, ma'am. These are mowers and tremmers that we use to maintain the park system, keep them groomed, keep grass cut. It's, it's medium-sized mowers all the way up to the large commercial mower. And it comes as a recommendation from the Oversight, Recreation Oversight Committee and it come out of the two, comes out of the 2018 SPOS.
Okay. Any questions for the board? All right, we move on to the next one, tab number 14. Thank you, Director Duce.
Yes, ma'am.
Authorization to approve a lighting agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation for the county to accept responsibility for the ongoing power service, operation, repair and maintenance of the lighting system upon GDOC's completion of the State Route 5 in Dorset Shoals Banks Mill Pool Road Roundabout and authorize the Chairman to sign all related documents. Director Valentine.
Good morning, Vice Chair, Commissioner. This, this project, I believe there was about two years ago, maybe two and a half years ago, there was a public meeting and there was input that affected the design. The concept report has been approved. And incidentally, this is a project worth about $10 million that is entirely funded, funded by the Georgia DOT with one exception, that is what is before you today. Typically, what they require is for the local government to take over the maintenance and the power requirements for all the lighting associated with the project. Now, it hasn't been designed in full detail, so we do not know exactly what that's going to look like, but it, it will incur a monthly power bill. And if there's any issues related to the power issues themselves, and if there's any issues related to the response, fixtures themselves when the county. Essentially, the Georgia DOT will require, essentially, Georgia DOT will require, they do, the county approved, the slide agreement, the slide agreement. Before they're responsible for designing, they are always, they have to begin, they are always to begin the design, but they need this.
Have a question for Commissioner Taylor for you.
Well, it's not on that roundabout. It's on the one that, on the one that bench, the five and one six six. You don't maintain the side of the lights on there, then, and one six, of the lights on there, then, at one sixty six. I remember we had the sign. Very much the same. I remember we had the sign, but I don't know that those lights are on that project. But I don't know that those lights are on yet. Citizens down there are complaining because. Citizens down there are complaining because. Whole project has not been maintained since. The whole project has not been maintained since.
We have reached out to the, to the Georgia DOT. I think that we have, we have reached out to the, to the Georgia DOT. I don't know whether there was a generally agreement with the county or not. And I don't know whether there was a formal look to see whether that's county or not.
Are you talking about for the maintenance or?
For the maintenance, there are separate agreements. For the lighting, for the maintenance, there are separate agreements, one for the lighting. My understanding is that there wasn't a lot of landscaping associated with that. My understanding is that there wasn't a lot of landscaping assigned, that was installed in, in, there was apparently a sign that was one point which was, roundabout, one point which was, and so, so they are, so, so they are, they are responsible for the maintenance of the landscape as it exists. However, my understanding is that, however, my understanding is that the sheriff saw this more. For a while, having, I believe the sheriff saw this, might have been some of the, having a detail.
Well, the complaints I hear is, why do they make us put on, well, the complaints I hear is, why do they make us put on the sidewalk? Intersections, and we do that. Intersections, we have the sidewalk. Everybody makes it. Unties the grass, it's actually growing. Unties the grass, it's actually growing. I guess it's because that's just the way DOT. But I guess it's because that's required that so many operate. They require that so many, that the county has to do. I really need, that, what we can do about maintaining. I really need, that's one of the first, what we can do about maintaining it. That's one of the signs of being, you're in Douglas County, so to speak. Sign of being, you're in Douglas County. Several miles, the county line. But that's, we used, several miles of the county line. But that's, we used, several miles of the county line. And we don't have anything there. And we're not sure what happens with weeds.
There aren't any lights there.
Yeah.
There aren't any lights there.
So.
There aren't any lights there.
Yeah.
There aren't any lights there.
So why did they put the lights? They finished the project.
Well, I don't know, Commissioner, that there were lights associated with the project. Well, I don't know, Commissioner, that there were lights associated with the project. I have to go back to G Doc and try and get some. My understanding is that it was a minimal design. My understanding is that it was a minimal design, sign of not much landscaping.
We had the sign, we had the lights.
Yeah, for the, for the lights, that would be. Again, it's typical of the design. Again, it's typical of the design. The extent of the lighting is not defined. The extent of the lighting, it is possible that they decided that the lighting design is necessary. It is possible that they decided that no lighting was necessary. I don't.
A lot of wrecks because the county surprised us. Around the place of Douglas County, they can't have a horse. They can't have a horse. But if you look into the maintenance part of it, if we're to maintain it, we need to maintain it in some, garden, you know, if they do it or something. Can we plant some flowers in the middle of it? There's just nothing but grass there. Absolutely, there's not very sightseeing. There's absolutely, it's not very sightseeing.
I will follow up with the Georgia DOT, try and get the definition of that. Whether they are accepting their responsibility, or maybe they are recognizing their responsibility for maintenance, or maybe they want to have an agreement that we will begin now is responsible.
And if, and if we're supposed to put lights.
Assuming that responsibility.
And if they were supposed to put lights. Before the intersection was redone. I don't know at the many meetings. Before the intersection was redone.
It was lighted as well. It was lighted as well.
It was lighted.
It was lighted as well. It was lighted as well.
It was lighted, yes, that was in the middle of the intersection. I just wondered, I would like to know how many accidents. I just wondered, say, we did a report to see how many accidents. Maybe since they redid the intersection to see if it's finished. Is there a need for additional lighting? Because you've got too many highways coming together there. Because you've got too many highways coming together there. And the tractor trailers are, they even come down cats' ferry, rather than that one. They even come down cats' ferry, rather than that one. Feed them cats' ferry, they turn on one sixty-six to avoid all the interchange. To avoid all the interchange and everything. Just give a report back and see what we can spruce it up a little bit. Just give a report back and see what we can do to spruce it up a little bit.
Move on to the next item, which is tab number fifteen. Authorization to approve sub tab agreement number two fifteen. R.J. Hane. Authorization to approve sub tab agreement, R.J. Hane. Signal project to add in. Auxiliary traffic. Signal display. Project to add in. Sign on all related documents. Signal display, authorize the chairman to sign all related documents.
He has, what happened to this project is once the installation was. What happened to this project is once the installation was the intersection, we realized that. We took a look at the alignment of the intersection and wrapping around Ben. Traffic travels westbound, wrapping around Ben. But here doesn't see the intersection. So this light display, rather than being in the middle. So this light side, rather than being in the middle of the intersection, with a light offset to the side. So had a C with a light of green or red ahead of the intersection.
Okay. Next, any questions? Move to tab number sixteen. Approval of additional funding allocation from twenty sixteen. Floss program, additional funding allocation. And our twenty sixteen floss program for transportation is distributed right away. And authorization to use a total of two funds to purchase right away as more than the limited by the transportation oversight committee and authorized the chairman to sign all related documents. By the transportation oversight committee and authorized the chairman to sign all related documents.
And this is, as you may recall, as part of, and this is initially, as you may recall, as part of the station equipment, initially there was one allocation. And we have found that we have, and we have found that we have a more urgent for additional maintenance of the, that it is not funded in year three. This flosser, and so what we are asking as a result. And so what we are asking as a result of this spring and summer. And essentially, wearing out a lot of the tractors. And essentially, maintaining out a lot of those tractors. In fact, the maintenance experience that we're, to the tune of about thirteen thousand. On a couple of these, what's been so far to the tune of about thirteen thousand. And that piece of equipment has been out of commission this year. And that piece of equipment has been out of commission. Only the expenditure, which is, which is very high. Only the expenditure, which is, which is getting very high. It takes that piece of equipment out of commission. But also, it takes that piece of equipment out of commission for an extra tractor. Some of them still have a little light weight. Tractors to the place of that. Some of them we can still use them. And until they break down, we can still use them. And until they break down, they're no longer there. They're no longer served. Continue to use with money. And it's going to take a certain, we are attending to several months. And it's going to take a certain period of time after several months approval by the board for us to actually have order and live equipment upon approval by the board. And actually asking an additional, I'll be ready for start on this floss. So we're asking an additional allocation from this floss.
These particular pieces of equipment have been requested. These, at least a couple of places. Have been requested, is that correct? At least a couple of places cycles, as I recall, is that correct? I was going to say to agree, but okay. That gives some background. I was going to say to agree, but okay. That gives some background to present the need to support this.
Okay.
Pressing the point here.
Thank you, Chairman.
I was just confirming with my colleagues.
Thank you, Chairman. We did discuss this during our transstanding committee. And again, we did try and, we did discuss this during our transstanding committee. And again, just trying to be consistent.
Almost a million dollars worth of supplemental funding. There's probably about almost a million dollars worth of supplemental funding. Ten items, forty dollars. That staff was designed. Came to a consensus, agreed that ten items, forty dollars. But it came to a consensus, an agreement that maybe the top three should get funded. Trying to go through a cycle, getting based on the disciplines. Of course, it's there, then trying to go through a cycle in the disciplines. Just because there, but I wanted to highlight that. Let's come up with real justification. We recognize the need and it's on the list, even in committee. We are pushing through those, we think.
We move on to tab number seventeen, authorization to approve the governmental. We move on to tab number seventeen. Authorization to approve the Baker's Bridge between Douglas and Howard County Roads. Going through Baker's High Bridge Road intersection. Now, Howard County Road, Lawrence Road, High Point Road intersection.
And this is a project that's been under a while. And this is a project that's been under a while. It was indicated, the final progress, as was indicated, the design has been presentation finalized. There are some, this design has been rightfully nearly finalized. There are some tweaks we need on before we rightfully engage in a definition. We have a decision we need before we can actually engage in a rightfully action. Months ago, we had a total, I think, perhaps maybe three, four months ago, we had a total of four or five. As a result of the redesign, we're looking at how we can apply. And as a result of the redesign, we're currently down to one county and the whole Douglas County. Others are very, one of the small parcels and the other are very, very small parcels. And so, along the, finalizing the design, disagreement essentially says that. Finalizing the design, disagreement essentially says that in splitting group, the county would participate at the last estimate, approaching a million dollars. Something of the last estimate is approaching a million dollars. So the exposure to the county would be, so the exposure to the county would be about half a million if the, if the state.
Thank you so much, Director Valentine. We'll move on to tab number eighteen. Authorization to approve the twenty nineteen work sessions, commissioning meetings. Planning and zoning work meetings and various hearings. What you said, the proposed, for, for, what you said, the proposed.
Planning and zoning and various meetings for them. The only difference you're going to see is less meetings for the planning zone. Otherwise, everything.
For the commissioners, you have these states. Just encourage you to take a look at them if you see any states have changed or devised. Encourage them to take a look at them if you see anything. All right, we'll move to tab number nineteen. Authorization to approve the twenty nineteen Douglas County. Tab number nineteen. Benefit organization to approve the twenty nineteen Douglas County employee. Benefit organizations authorized the chairman to sign all related documents. We have Director Perry.
Yes, Chairman. I'll, I'll, I'll yield the benefits from old care. This is a recommendation that's coming from, some of the benefits can be made. I am happy to say that a couple of years, some not experiencing any changes. For the last couple of years, we're not experiencing any changes. We've held, so we're playing that experiences in the SI. To answer your questions and answer your questions. And I will just make a few brief remarks. I will just make a few specific details. Brief remarks. MSIs, we'll drill down to specific detail. As we said, we have MSIs. We, with the process, as, as we, as government and business always do. We went through plans, we see a fair deal out there. We were satisfied with the response. Especially, we were satisfied with the response from the pharmacy. Especially as the pharmacy in our plan, their pharmacy, their medicines caused in our plan. That it would continue to remain. Completely, that is decision, continue to remain. No benefit changes other than, I think we did change. No benefit changes other than, I think we did change. We did increase the disability insurance, which was a fairly small. Deductible for disability insurance, which was a fairly small. That was, that was the only change. I think one of the things that we really want people, that was, that was the only change. I think one of the things that we really want to crow about is this. That is safe, benefits liability over the last couple of years and going forward. Benefits liability over the last couple of years is kind of briefly how this is trending. I'll ask our finance, our liability, briefly how this is trending to our liability.
This year, we budgeted, about, this year, we budgeted under what we budgeted for. We're about, about fifteen percent of the year, what we budgeted. We're having about three point eight million dollars deficit. Graciously approved to, we come up with a three-year plan for all. Graciously approved to rid of the deficit. We're on three-year plan for all. So there was a combination of about the deficit of three million dollars made. So there was a combination of about one point three million dollars made. If this trend continues with claims, that's the case. If this trend continues with claims, that's the case. Because I know we still have four months for the year. That deficit is going to be there in the year. That deficit is going to be there instead of being taken care of. Per the advice of MSI, as far as a budget for next year. Per the advice of MSI, as far as a budget for next year. Because of healthcare, what we budgeted for twenty nineteen. They've built a awesome budget, that's the same amount of our budget. So that's also a good advantage to not going up to the county. And the employees, the contributions are not going up to the county. And I'll keep you, those who have our budget returns, see if that trends to the news. And I'll keep you, those who have our budget returns, see if that trends to the news. And I'll keep you, those who have our budget returns, see if that trends to the news.
I would like to recognize Matt Bigwell with MSI, a great partner. I would like to recognize Matt Bigwell with MSI, a great partner. He's beginning, and that, he would like to say. Thank you.
All right. All right.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Okay. Any other questions? All right. It sounds like everything is, it's a good thing you have bringing up the expenses. Our board commissions. Next year, we have to prepare the expenses, our missions. But tab number twenty-three is our board form, keep the odds. Tab number twenty-three is in the board formation, keep Douglas. And that will be discussed in our executive session. Last but not least.
We do follow legal, real estate, and personal.
Okay, board commissioners.
Commissioner Condon, I just wanted to go back on this floss. And Commissioner Condon, I just wanted to go back on this floss. We have an inquiry, a formal turn. Can you talk about, we had the savings from inquiry regarding, in fact, our savings. Communications. The megahertz radio system, and if there was some savings. The megahertz radio system, what can, and if there was some savings. The question was essentially, what can we do? Can you weigh in on that? Click no version of that, please.
I give you a world where you find. Approved by the members in that category. I give you fire, EM. Approved by the members in that category. Fire, EMS, along with transportation. System, thirty-two percent, along with transportation. Information that is sent to the public, never completely. Information that is sent to the public, never radio system. Completely, can drive a defined radio system. Public radio system, approved by the BSC. Which was used by the BSC. In the referendum, the terms. Countywide major radio system. So I have a pine. Essentially, and I got to say this in some parts. So I have a pine. Essentially, and I got to say this in some parts. One of the questions was, question was, what is the public radio system? One of the questions, I said, what is the? Couldn't just buy the radio system devices. And I said, couldn't just buy device or system, because I would be providing. The system that they thought of them, because I would be providing. Having a good buy, additional radio upgrade devices throughout all. Having a good buy, additional radios, upgrade radios throughout all. So long as you act in front of the system. So it's. As it pertains to saves, so long as you act. Because these are broken down. As it pertains to saves, percentage. Because these are really down. How that fits in that percentage, not a technical save. You really don't know, know how that fits in that. There's not a technical save. But if you collect out, you don't know what thirty-two percent is. But if you collect out, you don't know what thirty-two percent of what spend down. You don't have that number yet. Thirty-two percent. Secondly, you got fire EMS and public radio system. Thirty-two percent. Projective fire EMS and public radio systems. So if the projected costs. Some projected saves. You hold that some, some projected savings. Do we have? You could hold that some projections to. Until you figure out, do we have? And I'm sure if we have, actual projections. So this is a track this cost. And I'm sure if we do, if we see we're way ahead or way behind. Probably we do it a little bit. We see we're way ahead or we're way behind. But you can't violate the categories within your own, the other categories. And you couldn't violate the percentages within your own. But the public radio system is not. Anything presented to the public. But the public radio system is not limited by anything presented to the public. County only. In fact, it was used countywide digital radio systems. In fact, it was used countywide digital radio system. Actually, the terms. The values. I hope the radio system, by the time we approve the question. You could spend money on additional stuff that communicates. I'm comfortable that you could spend money on additional stuff that communicates. Because it's part of interlocking system communication.
Fraud conversation. Recognize, you can't use a purchase of this. Public safety fraud conversation, recognize, you can't use. But within a public safety vehicle. recognize, but within a public safety vehicle, there is equipment that comes along with that, but within a public safety vehicle, there is equipment, car that comes along with that, also, you got forty cent worth of equipment, car, I'm saying, say that, you got forty cent worth of equipment. What we're saying, communication, that means just fire EMS, what we're saying, communication, is that, does that mean just fire EMS, marks, does it mean the share?
Any county vehicle, any county vehicle, parks and ride, EMS, animal control, anything that's something about parks and ride, and I would say about animal control, anything that's something about the radio, I know, I would say about, talking about own last radio, or not, other, for not being, is non-cash, in central, of what's thing that actually communicates, then the central, of what's described as a countywide digital.
Right now, that's all I'm wanting, to your point, to your point, realize, okay, you got a category, that's all I'm wanting, forecasting, they're, okay, you got a category, but we're spending fast, we're spending today versus, resetting every, we're spending fast, we're spending today versus resetting every, it's not a period of time, I think at some point twice a year, we get a reset on the list based on, or at least twice a year, we get a reset on the list based on the recast, and we just sort of assume, what we've done is locked in, we agree, and we just sort of assume, we'll be, everything we do, you almost have to, if you're going to add any projects, you almost have to. I just want us to agree, have that data, I think our program, our management should have that data, perhaps already, we'll get this off-line, and so, finance, maybe we all, if we go offline, and so, and can you have a, we're expressing, thank you.
Just one thing, some of our savings until, just one thing, some of our savings until, it's absolutely completed, because we pay, city up and running, problems, because we may stay online, we have problems, we need online, we need, like, need, hold on, might need to, yeah.
Well, this time, I'm, we're, we're going to have a motion, go and take second session.
So move with the condition that go to rest. Motion to go and take second session. Second. We have a motion in session, I'll send it to the motion chair, thank you. We have ten minutes, motion chair, thank you. Hold on, guys. Yep. That's right. Get on, get back, get back on, get back on. Okay, thank you, Commissioner. At this time, any, any other discussion for the board commissioners?
No, ma'am.
With that being said, this meeting is adjourned.
All right.
Take it away.